Record, but when you're ready, ready for us at any point in time. Um, I know Eldred is in the building, but we do have a quorum. Is it, should we begin?
Yes.
Go from there.
Yes.
We are ready, Jill. Thank you. Uh, thank you, everybody. We'll um, begin our uh, April sixteenth meeting. And uh, we will begin by entertaining motions.
I've, I've got it if you want me.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I do, okay. Um, I'd like to move that we enter into executive session. Uh, for the purpose of discussing negotiations with all bargaining units and the employment history of a specific person or persons.
Second.
Moved by Jill, second by Adam. Any discussion, conversation, debate? Hearing none called the question, all in favor. It is unanimous for those who are in the room. Uh, we anticipate being back around seven P M. If we're lucky slightly before then, we will see everybody shortly. Thank you very much. We're returning to public session. Uh, we'll continue on with our agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda? Hearing none. Thank you. We'll continue on with our agenda, which is the uh, receiving and hearing of delegates. Uh, before we proceed, um, a couple of quick um, notes, as folks may know, each speaker has three minutes to speak. There'd be a timer that will go off. If you're close to the end, of course, we'll let you finish. If it seems like it's going to continue, I may as politely as possible ask you to stop and uh, send your comments, uh, letters, uh, suggestions, recommendations to our board clerk. Um, you can do that if you read a statement as well. If you want to make sure all board members get that, please feel free to send it directly to the board clerk uh, as well. Um, in addition, I want to remind folks that we have a board policy about not identifying particular, specific individuals, employees, or students. Uh, please keep comments to the topic at hand if at all possible. Um, and again, as politely as I possibly can, if uh, there is a situation um, where I've, where collectively we feel that it may um, not stay on topic, I may try to interrupt. And again, I'll try to do that as politely as I can. With that being said, um, the board is always appreciative of people coming to speak to us, hearing from our community. Many folks have been writing to us. And so we're looking forward to the comments for this evening. Uh, my colleague, uh, Moira Lang will be reading names. Uh, please also give grace if a name is mispronounced. Um, you are welcome to come up to the microphone to speak. It is usually helpful for people at home who are watching the film, uh, watching the, the meeting. Um, and uh, if you would please pronounce your name or give your name, it will be entered into the official record so it can be entered into the minutes of tonight's meeting as well. Uh, one last piece is that our policy stipulates that the board has thirty minutes of public um, hearing. Um, I would presume that will be over those thirty minutes, but at thirty minutes, we will uh, entertain motions from the board. The board always has the um, opportunity to extend the public hearing portion of the agenda. But just to give folks a heads up, if that were to happen, then we'll take a vote or entertain motions and proceed from there. I think that's all I have on my notes. I'm looking at my board colleagues. I don't think I've missed anything. That is a fantastic, thank you very much, Katie. It is on the agenda. Much later, we will hear from the public. The board has a chance to respond. Should they choose, we will hear from our student reps. The board has a sp- uh, chance to respond. Should they choose, we will do a um, consideration of accounts. We will have a short word from our uh, superintendent. We will talk about the calendar and then we'll get to a budget conversation. Um, and the board has the luxury of moving this evening and having some additional conversations, but it'll be towards the end of our agenda, though it will be the main agenda item that we have for this evening. So thank you for that, Katie. Appreciate it. And with that being said, I yield to Moira.
First speaker is Andre Gardner.
Hey, my name is Andre Gardner. I'm a property owner in the city of Ithaca. My wife and I live on four ten South Geneva Street, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the budget. So, you know, I think this is a contentious topic for a lot of reasons. We've got children involved. Many of us in this room have kids. And this goes to our ability to afford to live in the city of Ithaca longer term. Uh, I got a few problems with this budget that I think are worth talking about. One, I think really relates to how this board and the school budget relates with the community as a whole. You know, I, I struggle with only having thirty minutes of public comment, especially relative to what the city and county do. And, you know, the school budget has received a lot of criticism from, and how the school board relates to the press has been a big challenge. Uh, and I'd like to see that improved on. And I think, you know, we have a very low turnout rate in our school board elections, and I think that's a measure that, you know, local municipalities and this board should look at as a metric of how people are doing their job. Uh, you know, I think the second thing is that, you know, there's a fundamental lack of fiscal conservatism with this budget. You know, with the county and the city both have the same constraints with staffing issues and state mandates. And they make it work. You know, we're the, this is the only board here that's seriously considering keeping the tax rate the same. And I think to some extent, we're really bailed out here as a board because the assessment went up by twenty percent. If the assessment hadn't gone up by twenty percent, you'd be looking at some pretty large tax increases here. And then I think finally, you know, as much as this is a hard conversation to have, I think we've really strayed away from an evidence-based approach to spending in our school system. I think this budget is largely on rails and is based on decisions that are made years ago. We have really good staffing ratios in this district, and as hard as it is to have a conversation about firing teachers and staff, you know, we need to connect our hiring decisions to end student outcomes. Uh, you know, no one in this room is anti-student. You know, we're all just trying to figure out how to pay all of our bills. And I'd encourage this board to think about that as well. So please vote no, and please think about in the future how we can better engage with the community, and let's extend public comment. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Ike Nestopoulos. Did I get that right? We'll hear you say it.
I think you. Um, I have a prepared statement I was hoping to read. Uh, I was raised in Ithaca, and I've been here all my life. My wife and I have raised children in Ithaca, all attending Ithaca City School District, including myself. I would like to stress how much I respect and appreciate all the teachers and Board of Education and everyone that works in the school district. We all realize that the state has not passed a budget for our school as of yet, but there's a law in place that states funding for our school cannot be lower than previous years. We all realize that the assessments are not complete, but we know that ninety to ninety-five percent of the assessments will hold true, so the board is being asked to pass a budget before the state has committed to a budget, and the assessments department has yet to commit to total assessment. We know we won't receive less than state funding, and we also know it will be more in assessments. So how can the school district possibly stay at the same rate? You can't. The rate must decrease. We went up five percent last year, and this proposal is asking for a twelve percent increase, seventeen percent in two years. This is unsustainable. Young families and people that want to live in Ithaca will be pushed out. People on fixed income will also be forced to leave. Enrollment is down in the city of Ithaca School District with the proposed path that will continue to drop. With the proposed path, we will be making it increasingly difficult for families to buy homes, live, and thrive in Ithaca. All development in the past twelve years over a billion dollars, the doubling of existing property taxes over the past twelve years, where's the money going? How could the rate not go down substantially? Is my feeling that possibly purchasing or renting half a million dollars in clocks, you know, could be one of the problems. But we don't need to cut teachers' programs. We need to run this like a business and not with wide open checkbooks. Please decrease the rate. Thank you, Ike Nestopoulos.
Thank you.
Charlie O'Connor.
Good evening, everybody. Um, my name's Charlie O'Connor. Um, my wife and I moved to Ithaca about ten years ago, the year my wife was pregnant. We moved to Ithaca because we felt that Ithaca was a better community that we want to raise our family in, and uh, this year our daughter's turning nine and our son is turning seven. And uh, you know, we enjoy the, the, the school system that our children are in. Uh, we've met so many nice families. But I am genuinely getting concerned at the direction of some of these um, of what we're seeing. I thought it was very interesting that the week my preliminary assessment came out, there was an article that hit the front of the Ithaca Times, and it said, "A Look at Ithaca's Housing Affordability Crisis." The rent is too damn high. And I think the rents are too damn high. Um, my message this evening is simple, and I think it's, it's just too much. You know, we live in uh, a part of this country that we have some of the highest rents. Um, we have some of the highest taxes. We have some of the highest home prices. And I'm really concerned that when we increase assessments and we don't get relief on the rate, that we are not solving our affordability crisis and we're only making it worse. It's really just too much. You know, when we're in an affordability crisis and we um, increase one of our largest expenses, which are our taxes, it's certainly not helping the cause. Um, I had some tremendous outreach, some from, from even just some of my, you know, close neighbors and, you know, their assessments went up two hundred, three hundred, as much as four hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, one of my neighbors is a good friend of mine, you know, they're, they're senior citizens living on a fixed income. And their message to me was, my assessment increased four hundred thousand. The rate doesn't come down, I'm going to be asked to contribute almost a thousand dollars a month more. And we can't afford to do that, you know? In talking with a lot of um, you know, members and working with uh, local real estate companies, what we are also seeing is, you know, even myself moving here, we were deciding whether or not we wanted to live in the city of Ithaca or on the outskirts, and we really wanted to live in the city. And uh, you know, what I see a lot of people doing now today is considering living on the outskirts of the city. Um, where they may think that it's more affordable because again, it's just too much. You know, my understanding is that with the new assessment role, there's an increase uh, surplus of close to thirteen million dollars um, into this year's budget. Uh, last year's budget was increased by five percent, and this year's budget's being increased by an additional twelve percent, you know? At seventeen percent increase in two years, I just don't see how that's sustainable, especially when we already had, are in an affordability crisis, you know, and it it scares me to think of the other problems that compound when, you know, we do have an affordability issue. Um, the last thing I'll say is um, when we're already living in a place where the taxes are so high, it just, it, it doesn't seem sustainable. So, I, I hope we can have some consideration to reduce the rate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Hayes.
You. Um, I'm a senior citizen. My wife's disabled. These kind of tax increases with our very small income will force us out of our home of eighteen years. We've never had children in the school district here, neither of us. I don't see anything that resembles fiscal management when you're raising ten, uh, five percent, twelve percent. It looks like monopoly money, five hundred thousand dollars for leasing clocks. Um, I understand the superintendent's salary is greater than the salary of the Vice President of the United States. That doesn't make any sense to me. I understand that superintendent's salary is one of the highest in the state of New York, even though this is a relatively small school district. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me either. I would like to know from the board why there was an article that the board was happy that they negotiated a one million dollar payment in lieu of taxes from Cornell, but you want thirteen million dollars more from the residents of the city who have no real extra money, the more, majority of us. And why isn't there a focus on getting Cornell to pay a fair share, which I would think is ten million or more a year to subsidize the property tax they don't pay in the city and in the county? I would urge the board not to get involved with electric buses. I saw that's part of this budget. T-Cats parking there is because they're mechanically unreliable. I think it's a, a thing that should be waited for a few years until that technology gets straightened out. Rather than another idea that doesn't work, that costs all of us money. And I would urge the board to consider the improbability of this budget actually passing in a vote this year. And the agreement to pierce the tax cap passing this year, given that people will come out and vote this year, like they usually don't. And you'll get a no, and you'll have to figure it out again. I think that there should be a lot better fiscal management in this organization than ten, twelve percent increases. I ran an airline for sixteen years. We did a thing called zero budgeting every year. Every department started at zero, and they had to prove what they wanted would bring value. Not just keep adding it on and figure somebody else would pay it because they didn't have a choice. Thank you.
I know I'm going to mispronounce this one. Yeah, you are presuming. You don't see. Susan Lustig.
Hi, I'm Susan Lustig. I've been working in real estate since nineteen eighty-nine. I have seen the cost of housing increase over the years and dramatically increase over the past five years. Ten years ago, the average price in the Ithaca City School District for a house was about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Now, in twenty twenty-three, it was just over four hundred thousand dollars. Ten years ago, the owner of that average house paid about thirty-two hundred and sixty-four dollars in school tax. In twenty twenty-three, the owner of that same house that's now worth four hundred thousand dollars will be, will pay sixty-four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. That's a ninety-eight percent increase in ten years. It's my understanding that the inflation over the same ten years is about thirty-two percent. When considering the budget and the welfare of all the children you are educating, don't forget the toll that the school tax burden causes. We want to do the best for our children, but when the cost of living causes tension in the household and the need to take on extra work, the kids lose out. They lose out on family dinners. They lose out on rested mothers or fathers. Some lose out on food, clothes, and basic necessities. By increasing the tax levy over and over again to meet the budget demands of the Ithaca City School District, we are knowingly also increasing the financial stress of many of our most vulnerable students.
Todd Fox. Um, first off, I just want to say how much I appreciate what you guys do, um, you know, for the schools, for the kids, for the teachers, for the community. Um, you guys have a huge responsibility on your shoulders, and, you know, I just want to acknowledge that. Born and raised in Ithaca, went to South Hill, uh, Boynton, graduated from I H S two thousand. My daughter went through the school system. You know, she's a freshman in college. I have two kids at Fall Creek. Um, so very rooted in the community. My mother was a teacher's aide for almost three decades at South Hill. So I've heard a lot about school budgets over the years. There's been plenty of times where she's been very against stuff because there has been a lot of things that were, you know, inflated or maybe not necessary. Um, I don't know where she stands on this here, and that's not really my place to say, but, you know? I think everybody in this room wants what's best for the students. You know, they, they want to focus on, you know, what's best for the community, uh, you know, for the teachers. And at the end of the day, you know, twelve percent increase is not sustainable. And what's happening is there's an affordability crisis in this community. Everybody keeps talking about it. And eventually, you know, to echo, you know, what was just said is, you know, families can't afford to live here. The burden that's being put on the families. You know, you guys have a direct role in that, and we really hope that you're looking holistically at the impact of not just, you know, the school budget, but the impact of the community. So um, I'm here to speak against the current budget and hope that you guys will lower the, the tax rate. So, thank you.
Jeff Lauer.
Hi, my name. Hi, my name is Jeff Lauer. Um, I was born in Ithaca, lived here most of my life. Um, I have a child in the school system. First, I want to say thank you for everything you do. Um, you know, and the teachers, uh, there's a lot of my, um, there's a lot of things that kids require these days that you guys put in a lot of extra work for, and that's not always appreciated or noticed maybe, um, but it is definitely appreciated. Um, my partner is a school teacher, not here, but um, I understand uh, the need for great teachers, for good pay for all of this. Um, but the community needs some relief. You know, everybody, and I'm, I'm, I'm sure all of you are seeing things get more expensive everywhere. And I just, I want to ask for you to think about giving some relief to the community. Thank you.
Preston Lambrou. Oh, okay, yeah, I see. Okay, so, uh, Valerie Evans.
Hi, I'm Valerie Evans. Can you hear me? You know, do you mind?
Thanks, I'm old. I'm also a teacher, so, um, I will, thank you.
Um, is this on? Oh, I don't need it, because I, I'm a teacher. Okay, they gotta hear me at home. All right. Um, I'm going to tell you something. I am, I am a teacher. I'm also a taxpayer. I've got tiny little songs on the edge down, and that sounds like a country restaurant song. Um, I'm also a member of the Equity and Inclusion Leadership Team, which is very important to me because equity and inclusion has always been the most important part of my life as an educator. And I know a lot of you, some of you I don't know. Thank you very much. I think we have a terrific board. Um, I have been bothered lately, and the reason I came, I don't like uh, coming to meetings at night because I'm, you know, been teaching for thirty-seven years. I'm tired. Um, but the reason I wanted to come is because I've been seeing a lot of untruths in social media and the local papers. Things that we used to call them lies, but we don't do that anymore. We just, you know, uh, which is a whole other topic. But I wanted to speak up just about a couple shaky things I've seen on social media and the paper. Um, retirees, I am going to be in your club two months and seven days from now. Okay, I'm not, I'm not that I'm counting that much, but after thirty-seven years, I'm not, but I'm not going to stop being part of this community. I will never stop caring about all of those kids, which I think all of you do, and so that's why I wanted to talk to you. Because um, yeah, uh, I, I'm going to pay my taxes, uh, all of them after I retire, and I hope that our school uh, does the incredible job that they're doing and keep doing it because we've got more and more to face. And, you know, retirees pay taxes for my child when my child was in school. I, I think that kids are kind of the, all of our responsibilities. So um, that was one thing I wanted to bring up. Um, also, our major expenditures are not phones and clocks, folks. I hate to burst your bubble, but a lot of that stuff, we really don't know the truth about. And if we, I'm, I'm, I'm here to also ask the board, can we put down some truths so that people know, for example, it's not that everybody is, oh, electric buses. The governor told us to get electric buses, and we have to abide by that. So that's like a non, we, we don't have a, a choice there. I also think that um, you know, uh, our major expenditures are staff. It's true. People are our major expenditures, but our need for staff has not diminished over the past few years. Um, the explosion of our social emotional needs for kids and families are, uh, it's outrageous. We're being told, you know, to do certain things, uh, but without losing state aid at the same time. Um, so what are we supposed to do? Pay less? We're already behind our neighbors in, and I think we value educators, so we have to pay them enough to live here. I am one of the few people on my team that actually lives in Ithaca because they can't afford to.
Miss, I'm going to have to ask you to make a final statement. We're passing.
All right, so if we cut programs or staff, the people that are going to suffer are the most marginalized. Now, if you all want to march up the hill and protest against them, I'm with you because they're the people that drive the um, property up. They're the people that don't pay their fair share. And they're the people who, why we can't find affordable housing and, and tear our roads up and cost us all kinds of money. So, get it. Sorry, Cornell, but that's the truth.
Uh, Brian Welch.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Brian Welch. I was born and raised here, grew up here. I spent fourteen the last years of my life, uh, finding operational and um, product efficiencies for financial institutions. And I want to focus on the assessments and what came out, and some things that struck me. One, this isn't a knock on the assessment board or the group, but um, I think they have a hard task at hand. One thing I would say is they don't have a process that seems to be legitimate. There's far too many outliers. When you look at people across this county, people are upset because there's no rhyme or reason, and there doesn't seem to be any clarity of how things were adjusted. And I think the impact is going to be grave, simply because if this budget passes, there was letters that were sent out to the community members about their assessments, and in big, bold, black letters, it said to people, well, your taxes are only going to increase two hundred and fifty dollars. We need to go on record here and say that is incredibly deceiving. And when you talk about community engagement, the lack of community engagement can be directly correlated to that letter and those bold letterings. The reality of that is if this budget passes, you're going to be seeing thousands of dollars per household increase across the board. For example, my mother's assessment went up a hundred thousand dollars in one year. She lives on a fixed income. The house hasn't been touched in thirty-five years. When she looks at that letter and sees two hundred and fifty dollars, she flat out said, well, it's only two hundred and fifty dollars. And I said, Mom, that's not true. I think that everyone has a responsibility in this room to be loud and vocal about the reality of what this budget's going to do, and coupled in with the assessments, how that tax is going to be gravely increased. And you talk about doing this in the name of equity. I agree, we need, we need equity, but there's nothing equitable about that process, and nobody can explain it. And one of the biggest things I look for in a process is, does it make sense? How many outliers are there? Are these outliers an anomaly, or is there something that's driving them? And the reality is it's being driven because there is no process. You can't possibly look at twenty-three thousand parcels in this county, assess them all in six months without looking at any of them and just say, oh, yeah, twenty-five percent increase, thirty-eight percent increase. No, you get ten. There's nothing equitable about that because you don't have a process. So I would urge to really consider, you know, relooking at that process because as it sits right now, i- i- it's dangerous. Um, another thing I would say in terms of the buses, that was a concern for me. I don't really understand it. I understand that, you know, there's a drive for electric vehicles, but at the end of the day, the mandate that you're referencing is from the governor. That doesn't kick in until two thousand thirty-five. And I would urge that this, these people on this board would say, listen, that doesn't work. It's yet to work. It's been nothing but proven to fail. Do you want to be the first people to fail and waste the money? Or do you want to see how this rolls out? Give it time. Give the technology time to get to speed. Give the technology a time to actually function properly and then invest your money. As it sits now, you already have a subset. You can look at the two you got now that aren't functioning. Do you want to put forty million dollars into something else that's not going to function because you're going to be the first to do it? Or do you want to sit back, be fiscally responsible with taxpayer funds and say, let's give this a few years? Let's make sure that we're going to do this the right way for the right reasons, rather than, yeah, let's do it. The, the governor said we have to do it. The governor did not say you have to do that this year. And to be honest with you, it'd be fiscally irresponsible to do it this year because it doesn't work. The experts. The experts in the field of this will be the first ones that tell you that. The grid alone would be insane. They can't charge them. They're not going to function in the winter. I mean, look at the bikes. The bikes don't function in the winter. We got those out all winter. There are a lot of people riding electrical bikes in the city of Ithaca in the dead of January. There aren't. I'm just saying, you know, to, to, to finish up, everyone is okay with paying their fair share of taxes. Everyone is okay. Everyone wants the best for the kids, but we have to be fiscally responsible about this. And I don't think it's fair that some of these people in this community that we're trying to protect are actually going to be getting hurt by this. You're, you have to look at the senior citizens, and you have to look at the people on the fixed incomes who are going to be absolutely blindsided by this tax bill, when in reality they thought they were going to be fine. And it's the responsibility of, of all of our legislators to educate the community and what the impact is actually going to be. And I, and I'm, I'm really concerned with that, and I don't think it's right that we were very quick to send out this assessment and to kind of like harbor those, those fears and, and, and kind of quiet those voices, and then you're going to hit them on the back end. If anything, I think there's a responsibility to send out a new note, lay it out in a chart. If this budget passes at twelve percent, even if the tax, if, if the rate stays the same, you're going to see this X, Y, Z. If that's the case, we wouldn't be in the, in, in an auditorium that fits a hundred and six thousand. You'd be over in the auditorium.
So before a final statement, my apologies.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I would just say, you know, to everyone else's sentiment, you got to focus on the people that aren't aware of what this increase is going to do to them, and their disengagement from this because they're being deceived by that letter. To me, that's the biggest thing, and I'd like to see that get addressed. Thank you.
Don Wright.
Hi, everybody. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. I don't mean to be petty, but I do just want to point out, it says that the meeting starts at six P M. on the website, and it says the first item is call public meeting to order, and I think most reasonable people reading those words would assume that the public part of the meeting starts at six P M. And also, it said on the slide up here that the meeting ta- typically starts at seven P M. So if you guys know it's going to be seven P M., please communicate that fact so people who have busy schedules aren't wasting an hour of, of, of their evening that's hard to come by. But, uh, other than that, I'm here to talk about the budget. Um, my framing for this is that I am not an expert on, on school budgets and, and that you guys are the experts on school budgets. I do know enough, looking at the numbers, that the proposed budget is thirty five thousand dollars per student per year, and I know enough to know that that is a very high amount uh, relative to other districts in the area, relative to other districts across the country. Um, it is a large budget, and it's a large increase. Asking for a twelve percent increase is a very substantial increase. I don't know enough to know how reasonable that request is, but I believe it's incumbent upon the people making the request to communicate their analysis and understanding of why a twelve percent increase to a budget that is already comparatively very high is occurring. I don't know where I can look to see you all's analysis and, and argument for this increase. I think without presenting that very clearly, if I have to, to dig through, and the people in this community have to dig through hours of old board meetings to find some presentation for why a twelve percent increase to the budget that is already very large is justified, I believe that you are not doing your jobs properly at that point of communicating to the public. You all need to come to us and explain to us why that large increase is justified. Why is it needed when we are already spending so much more than so many other communities? And I know that we are because the numbers are publicly available, and I have done my best to try to educate myself to look around and compare what is being spent in different places. I know we're spending a lot, and you're asking for a lot more. Where's the argument? I want a presentation, a report, a slideshow, a letter, a pamphlet, something where you guys are making the argument for why this is justified. Without that, it's a solid no.
Charles Harrington.
All right, thank you for, uh, chance to speak. Give me a second. Uh, I'm a property owner. I've lived in Cor- uh, in Ithaca for approximately twenty four years. Uh, I retired from Cornell in two thousand and three. Uh, my wife and I have lived in Ithaca, uh, like I said, for twenty four years. Uh, I was a when I retired from Cornell, I felt this is the place I wanted to live. I'm finding it very hard to re- retire, knowing that the taxes are constantly going up. Uh, my property has gone up, uh, twenty percent. The, the property below me, uh, uh, has no increase. And the property above me was an increase of nine percent. I just, I just feel like it's going to be a very tough for me to live here. Uh, I don't know what, uh, the future will hold for my, my wife and I. We, we don't have any children, but, uh, we, we both understand that children have to be educated. Uh, uh, I just want to say thank you for listening to me and uh, I just, I'm also a veteran. Thank you.
Um, as per board policy, we've reached thirty minutes. Um, if the board wishes to extend the time, we will entertain a motion. Jill.
I move that we extend the time for public comment.
Second.
Moved by Jill, second by Adam. Any discussion?
Extend to how long? Uh, we're gonna give a time limit because it's thirty minutes. Well, I just, point of information, we have four more people have signed up to so, okay, so.
So, I'm. Do fifteen, and then we can do it again.
Why don't we just go with the thirty and see where it leads us? Right? Any discussion beyond that? All in favor? I believe it's unanimous. Thank you very much, Mark.
Uh, Anita Graff.
Hi, my name's Anita. I came to live with my husband in Ith- Ithaca in two thousand. We live across the street from B J M. We have three kids now ages twenty two, eighteen, and twelve. I come from a family of public school educators. Uh, my mother was a teacher. My father was a teacher. My father was a principal. My father was a superintendent. This was in California. Uh, my husband comes from the Dominican Republic in a very poor neighborhood where most people didn't have an education, couldn't get one. Uh, so that's where we come from. We now own our own house, and we have several multifamily, uh, rental properties in town. So we pay lots of property taxes. Uh, our kids each have only attended the public schools a few years. So we've not even benefited directly from, uh, school taxes with our own children. I would have loved to have had that thirty five thousand dollars for each of my children per year to educate them. Uh, I feel like the letter that told residents that there was no increase in rates was disingenuous uh, when the property assessments were going up, and that means that taxes are going up. Uh, and I can tell you that the mood on the Fall Creek neighborhood list is something that I, like, I have never seen it before. There is a real, uh, swelling of uh, outpouring of people who are not happy with this. And in the twenty two years, there are twenty four years that I've lived here, I've never seen that. I've never seen anyone ever question anything when it comes to raising taxes or spending money on schools because it's understood that we're a, a community that values children and education, and that's what you have to do. But I have a master's in economics, and I can tell you that there are trade offs. And you cannot have everything, and everything has to get paid for one way or another. So I think the chickens are coming home to roost. I think people are realizing that there actually is an end. We would like a magic wand, and we would like everybody to have everything that they want, but that isn't the reality. Uh, the district, like any other entity, will always find a way to spend funds and always come up with justifications for more funds. And, uh, I think that we need to do more to figure out how to carefully spend what you already have. And I think we can do that. I don't think having homeschooled my, my kids, I, I do not think that it requires that much money. Now, of course, a lot of the schools are doing things much more than education. It'll become, uh, social services, and there's a whole lot of other things that schools do. Uh, but I think that there's a lot of ways that the budget can be uh, balanced. So just in conclusion, I want to make it really clear that my family and I do not support an increase in school budgets paid by increased property taxes. And we think we can do better. Thanks.
Andrea Torado.
Hi, I'm Andrea Torado. I am a recently retired pediatrician. I understand how much the schools have taken on in caring for our needy children, especially the marginalized children, the children who are suffering from anxiety which has gone through the roof. We are definitely having a mental health, health crisis, and schools have been asked to really handle quite a bit more than they're prepared to. And I understand that that comes with a lot of money, uh, that needs to be applied to that task. However, I do think that I want to reiterate what's already been said, you know, that there is accountability and communication that's absolutely needed for people to understand where the money is going. Um, also, uh, I think that the latest, greatest technology is, is definitely expensive and not always evidence based. We need to look at outcomes. We need to look at programs that work um, rather than programs that cost or that are recommended. And we need to, to have uh, communication and, and proper procedures that, uh, ensure good outcomes for our kids. Um, I uh, also will not be supporting the budget. I have supported this budget year in and year out unquestionably, but this year is too much. Thank you.
Keith Fox.
Hello, my name is Keith Fox, and I'm a property owner and live in the town of Ithaca with my family. I think there's been a lot of good points made today, and I haven't prepared anything. Um, and I don't want to repeat other talking points that people have already mentioned. So I think that their current budget, uh, I'm against it. I think it's become bloated at this point. Um, I'm not sure exactly where you could get thinner and improve or cut costs. Uh, I don't have a solution for that. That might be a long term uh, problem that we need to solve, and there's a lot of people here that look like they want to be engaged. Uh, so maybe that could be something that we circle back to, but I think the only short term solution to the current problem is to vote no for the current budget because it's too much and it's all half. Thank you.
Jim Meehan.
Hi. My name is Jim Meehan. I live at, uh, three O two Sienna Drive. Um, I've written an email to all the board members, uh, this past week. Um, but I wanted to be here tonight to observe the process and to meet the decision makers. I am a homeowner and a taxpayer. And the proposed budget reflects a twelve point one four percent increase of the last year's budget, the largest increase of any school district in the state. And I read last week in the Ithaca Times that, um, one thing that, you know, the board or the budget process is proud of is that, I guess, they've lost state and, um, federal funding. I assume most of that was probably COVID, uh, funding which expired. But they haven't had to make any cuts. They've, uh, observed the loss of those funds. But essentially, what you've done is you, you, you've transferred the burden onto the homeowners. And that's what's in this twelve point one four percent increase. I am a retiree and a fixed income, like a number of other people here. How am I to pay this latest, uh, increase? Okay, my options are either to pay out of my savings or to, uh, sell my house and move to a more affordable district. My understanding is that New York has a cap on, uh, you, you know, the, the school budgeting process. Obviously, ICSD is, uh, ignoring that cap and moving right through it. I cannot support the current budget proposal or any proposal that, that exceeds the, the, the state cap. I will vote, and I will go door to door to make as many of my neighbors aware of what is happening. Thank you.
Uh, that is everyone who has signed up to speak. If people have additional comments, again, you can send them to, you can send them to the board clerk. Uh, you can send them via email to all, or all board members. For folks who wrote to the entire board, you hopefully have received the response from me. Uh, folks should know that is the board's, uh, general practice that the board officers speak on behalf of the board, but doesn't mean you cannot write to individual board members as well. At this time, we will entertain any board responses.
I, I signed up online.
Oh. Oh, okay.
Absolutely.
I'll, I'll be brief. I, I don't want to repeat a lot of the things that were said tonight, and I do appreciate everybody's time. I understand that, you know, the volunteer nature of all this. Um, I'm super passionate about education. I have three kids, two at Northeast, one at Duitt. Like, you know, education is super important. But I also feel like, you know, fiscal conservatism and, and being pro education are not mutually exclusive to one another. And I think that we can figure out how to be, you know, trying to deliver the best services that we can, but also being, you know, responsible in terms of how we allocate money and dollars. The, the thing that, that nobody has mentioned yet today that really set me off was the article that came out in the paper about how we were going to fix the rate for three years after the preliminary assessments had already come out. So everybody knew that the assessments were going up, and they're saying, you know, we're setting the rate here. It's not going to move. We're going to collect all of that money, and so we're not really going to budget around what we need. We're just going to take everything. And I don't think that, that's kind of an abdication of board duty to, to plan like that. I think that there needs to be some, some underlying data and, and analysis that goes into what, you know, what makes up the budget, not just taking everything. So I'm, I'm against the increase, and I appreciate everybody's time tonight. Thank you.
Could you tell us your name, please, just so we can make sure it's in the record? Thank you very much, Nick. Thank you very much, Nick. Um, we will move to uh, board responses.
I'll go first because I always do and usually say the wrong. I've saved on the microphone. I said I'll go first and I do often and I often say the wrong thing, but I kind of prepared a little more today. Um, I've been, I even have watched meetings again that I've been to because of how important this is. And I want to thank everyone here that's coming. I know how hard it is to, to make it here and take your time out of your day. Um, I'm also a taxpayer. Uh, the assessments are really kicking my butt, right? I uh, I serve on this board and sometimes I wonder if everyone's in touch with what reality is. Because like so many people, my job doesn't pay benefits. I don't get paid vacation. I don't get sick time, right? So my assessments, I will pay through the money I normally put in my retirement funds. But I would pay them. Uh, I, I often wonder where our taxes go here in Ithaca. I moved here a while back, but not that long ago. And where I moved from, our taxes actually paid for our recycling and trash pickup. And I don't know what that's about here, but it'd be nice if our taxes paid for a little more. And I say this because I am in our schools all the time. Okay, I'm a board member. I ran for the board because I wanted to be a voice for families that have kids with disabilities. And I have two kids that have disabilities. It's, it's increased over the past year. Um, and where I lived in Alexandria, when I tried to enroll my son in kindergarten, they didn't want to take him in general education. He was the first kid with Down syndrome to be in a general education classroom in that school, which blows my mind. And so a lot of people here are talking about, I don't understand thirty five thousand dollars a student. I don't think you understand how rare it is, the level of inclusion that we practice here. Okay, I know that a lot of the outgoing messaging is talking about culture, right? But when you get down to it, when we're talking about inclusion, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, it was passed in nineteen seventy four. That IDEA allowed students with disabilities to go to school. Okay, that is relatively new and I wanted to make sure I got my stats right. Okay, nine, sorry, nineteen seventy five. Okay, the federal government back then promised to pay forty percent of the excess cost of special education services when it was passed. It's never happened and the share remains at fourteen percent. Okay? So when we're talking about cost per student at a school where we don't send kids to ID classrooms, that's Intellectual Disability Classrooms or MD classrooms, that's Multiple Disabilities Classrooms. autism classrooms or this classroom or that classroom. We're talking about supporting all students in general ed classrooms. Okay? That means smaller class sizes. That means that in addition to teachers, you have co-teachers, you have integrated co-teaching. You have speech therapists, you have OTs, PTs. You have all this extra staff supporting these students who have every right to be in those classrooms. I am lucky enough to have my children in these schools, okay? And I have three kids. And it's surprising to me how much time our educators have for my kids alone. And this happened before I was a board member, right? I moved here and I was thinking it would be PTSD and I'd get shut out again and have to fight. And it's never been a fight here. Okay, it's not perfect. We got a lot of work to do. Inclusion is new. If you think about, I look at the faces in this room and the ages of people in this room. Almost all of us, all right, aside from the students here. When we were born, kids were sent to institutions. Anybody here, hear Willowbrook? That lovely New York place, right? Where they sent people with disabilities? If my son was born in nineteen seventies, they would have said, let's send him there. Willowbrook, we learned in nineteen seventy two from Geraldo Rivera, back when he was a cub journalist, not the tabloid person we know now. He was doing good work then. Uh, Robert F. Kennedy, um, not junior, but the other one. He called it a, uh, I wrote this down. What did he call it? He called it a, um, hmm, hmm, hmm. Snake pit, thank you. Kids in excrement, kids not clothed, okay? We are still new at this. Willowbrook was not shut down until nineteen eighty seven. People are still being institutionalized, but Ithaca is like, no, screw this. We're going to stick with it and we're going to make sure we support every student. Okay, and that happened ten years ago as we're looking at all these increases. And in this time span, we're also seeing kids who are in mental health crises, kids who have gone through COVID, kids who have parents who are struggling because we're struggling and I get it, like, I am struggling too, right? That's why it's expensive. That's why we pour over this budget. We're still learning how to do inclusion, but it is never going to be cheap. In fact, if we cut this budget, it's, we're going to hear about more problems. We're going to have teachers who need more help. A t- one teacher in a classroom is not enough, y'all. I see with my own kids that uh, I can't even remember, forgive me, my own neurodiversity issues I'm dealing with, but it speaks out with a school nurse. Another uh, at DeWitt, my child's had a mental health crisis. Most schools, he has Down syndrome, they would just say that's a behavior. We need to expel him. We need to do this. We need to put him in a self-contained classroom or take him to Bosse's. The team there, they contacted me to tell me they're concerned because they don't see the joy that he has. They were the people that pointed out and allowed me to go and get him the help he needed because they noticed it and they gave a damn. And that's why it costs thirty five thousand dollars a student. Okay? It's, it's not easy, but it's worth it. When we look at what we're talking about, and I know you're angry with us in the assessments, okay? But our schools, our public schools across this country are not properly funded by their states. We're not getting proper federal funding in Ithaca alone. I mean, I'll let my colleagues describe the issues of why we're overtaxed, okay? But the anger, I get the anger and you should have it. It's too much. It's dragging us all down, but I hope that you take some of this passion on a state and federal level because that's where we need to really affect the change. Let's work together and figure out how to ease the burden, okay? But if we really want to change things so our students can get what they need, we got to look beyond our actual school districts and get our legislators to do their jobs. I hope that that's it for now, but thank you.
Other board, Adam? I guess, I guess I'll go next. Um, first of all, I appreciate everybody coming uh, to the meeting tonight. Um, I think it's really great for the community to, to come out and advocate. Um, I like to see a packed room. Um, I kind of wish when I do my curriculum committee, we have as many people as interested and engaged. Um, just because I was specifically called out by somebody in the audience for smiling, I'll just address that, which is that one of the speakers tonight was my mother-in-law, who I love. And I was just happy for her when she made her comment and people clapped and it made me smile. So it wasn't a disrespectful smile. It was just that we're a community and uh, I have relationships with some people who are here tonight. Um, that aside, I'll say also that um, you know, uh, I'd like a budget that is um, you know, that can support students, can support teachers as much as possible. Um, but I hear from everybody from the community. We've gotten a lot of emails. We have a lot of people in the room tonight. Um, and so I think it's important that we work together as a board and as a community um, to come up with a budget. Um, that's, that's lower than the proposed budget. Um, and you know, to that end, we're going to talk a little bit more later tonight about some, some different possibilities. Um, personally, I'd like to see some reductions in the budget, in the budget that, um, you know, don't impact student-facing positions. So things that won't hurt learning, um, teachers, classroom, things like that. Um, but it's very complicated. This is my first year on the board. Um, I didn't run for the board because I wanted to manage a hundred and seventy million dollar budget. Um, but now I understand the complexities on all the different sides. Um, and I think we just kind of have to work together to come up with something that is more acceptable to the community, but also can keep centering the values that we have in the school district. So it's, it's a, a complicated threading of the needle, but I think everybody on the board hears um, you know, that people in the community are, are looking for us to make some kind of a change.
All right. Again, let me piggyback and thank the community for coming out. I'm smiling because of the interest, even though the subject matter is difficult. Um, let me just first start by saying I acknowledge that emotions are high. I acknowledge that folks are here representing themselves, their families. I give a special shout out to our retired veteran, veteran and other people who talked about being on the other side of uh, weekly or monthly income. So thank you all. My first meeting as a board member in two thousand and nine, my first meeting was in this very room. And we had twice as many people in the room advocating against cutting our music and arts programs. My second meeting, someone dropped a bomb unfortunately at the eleventh hour threatening to close the Fall Creek Elementary School. For those of you who have been around here that long, you know, that was a that was an extremely emotional conversation. So let me just put it out there that you know, I've sat in this seat for a while. So I'm going to share some experiences and some knowledge that I've gained in sitting in this seat this long. To those who say that we are exercising poor fiscal responsibility and judgment, here are some numbers for you. Tompkins, Tompkins County Assessors Office just published some information. They published it, had nothing to do with us. And obviously it goes without saying, we don't go around and assess properties. And I don't think there are twenty six thousand, if I'm correct, there are thirty six thousand parcels in the county. In their own documentation, they had an example of a home that ten years ago was assessed for a hundred and fifty. Ten years later, that same hypothetical property is assessed for three hundred thousand. Do the math. It's a one hundred percent increase. If you look at what we have done, trying to be fiscally responsible, fiscally conservative, given the increasing needs of our students here. Our budget in that same period has gone from roughly a hundred and twenty five. Now we're proposing a hundred and seven. You do the math. That's a little over thirty five percent. And in each of the years I've been on this board, we have managed to control this budget expense by roughly two to four percent, let's say. We've gone over the tax cap or proposed going on, over the tax cap three times. One had this little event called the two thousand eight global financial crisis. And the state proceeded to come in and take our money under auspices of something they call the gap elimination adjustment. Which was really penalizing districts like us that were being fiscally conservative by taking the money that we had legally put in our reserves. Another situation, a little thing called the global pandemic. And to, hold on, I want to mention that name because I think that name was Jim Meehan. Where are you, Jim? Did he stay? All right. He almost hit the ball out of the park. During the pandemic, we had to reset all of our salary positions. We have far five bargaining units. If any of you paid attention during those three and a half terrible years, the entire American economy's labor force, the salaries were reset and we were no different. So we come to you this year and ask for a seven percent plus increase in the budget. Four percent, write that off. Four percent is the same thing you all are experiencing. That's an increase in the cost of milk, cheese, gas, whatever. Actually, gas is not included in CPI and inflation because it's too volatile. I read something recently that said the Saudis might play with a particular political um, candidate which might make our ga- gas prices go up back up to something that we don't want to see this summer or as the election approaches. So we have a choice. Try to get off that game and replace our eighty eight bus fleet with electric vehicles. Right now, we're in a position almost as a first responder in this state to try and get out there and get the rebates, right? Try to get out there and get the state aid compensated for that. Our employees are bussing their hindquarters, trying to make sure that we get as many of those dollars back for that investment. Yes, those buses are more expensive. Yes, it seems to be, the jury seems to be out of weather and that. They're going to be effective here, right? Our hills, our winter, et cetera. We're exploring that. And we have uh, some of our colleagues leading that conversation on the facilities committee, and we have some of the best experts and consultants in the state trying to help us manage that. Just a couple of more points because we are going to discuss this in more detail, but this is a response of some of the things I heard. Clocks. We spent millions of dollars in this district trying to uh, uh, reconfigure the front of each elementary school for obvious reasons. Having that digital precision, being able to communicate with external uh, entities, uh, first responders requires us to invest in those clocks. Seven hundred seventy rooms, five hundred thousand dollars. Again, you can do the math. For someone to say that's extravagant means you just haven't been following our process and that's not a criticism. You're all busy. But we started this conversation about our budget this time last year. This is not new. I would like to see in the coming year that some of you come out to our regular financial committee meetings, which are always posted, which are open to the public. And like I said, have been going on for twelve months. We've had every department leader in this district come and speak to us about their needs and we got to press some about those needs. Whether it was art, whether it was a conversation about having a literacy program that works for everyone for a change, whether it's professional development, whether it's our attempts at, um, hmm, lowering the decrease in mathematical outcomes for our students. So I understand the emotion. But I understand from my perspective, having led these conversations for now two years, only being paid in chicken and salad, that it's very unfair for us to be bearing the brunt of your confusion and dissatisfaction with the Tompkins County Assessment Office. We do not assess property. We run a hundred and fifty million plus budget trying to manage things for six thousand kids. When Sean and I ran for this board the first time in two thousand and nine to Aaron's point, and then I will end and hand this off to my colleagues. There were classes next to the boiler in some of our elementary schools. Every school along the hallway had a room with padding in it because that's where you put those kids, who you couldn't control. Fifty one percent of the African-Americans in this district were graduating from high school. It was a smaller percentage for kids with individual education plans. Many of those things have been corrected. The cuts that folks are proposing, we look to do in this budget will impact that tremendously. And as I've said before, I will not judge anyone in this room who has to make a personal decision about how you vote on this budget. Let me tell you, I have my own lines in the sand. We love these kids. We love all of them. And it's our job, it's our elected duty on this side of the table to try and protect them and their education as much as possible. Thank you.
I'll keep this quick because I know that we're going to be talking about this more at length later. But I'm just going to say thank you for coming, even if, you know, you weren't able to make it to one of the previous twelve months of finance committee meetings. Um, thank you for coming now because even though I think Anita said we wish we had a magic wand to reconcile all of the competing interests, um, your voices have, even if they come now, they help us to take a second or a third or a fourth look at this budget that has been developing, but is, has still, to be clear, has still not been voted on. So despite, you know, what was commonly understood as, you know, the the board had said this, or this was, you know, anything was set in stone budget-wise. It was still, it was still a work in process. And so I'm, I'm grateful for your paying attention and I'm grateful for you coming. And I look forward to seeing how it works out. And like Eldred said, I think this ultimately goes before the voters, right? And I appreciate your participation in this process.
I'll try to be brief too. Uh, one, uh, to all of you who thought the meeting would start at six and it didn't start till after seven. Uh, unfortunately, there's this uh, legal Unfortunately, there's this legal technicality that we can, we have to say that the meeting starts at 6:00, which is when it's called to order. And even when we know that there's going to be an executive session, we cannot officially publicize that. Don't ask me why. This is New York State, and I'm going to say something else about New York State in a minute. So unfortunately, you know, when we're able individually and privately, like for instance, when people have, some people have signed up to speak, they have found out, but not officially, that there's going to be an executive session. But, and you know, we do recognize it is problematic. And we're dealing with this legal technicality. And we deal with lots of legal technicalities, including mandates that have no funding for them. And going to Aaron's point, the fact that school districts in New York State and other states, but not all states, are funded by property owners. And the largest burden in this county is not on corporations or businesses, it's on the individual taxpayer. This is a terrible way to fund education because because it results in this, you know, pitting people's concern about children and education and caring about that with their personal financial stress and concerns about staying in their homes. So what really needs to happen at the, you know, the state and federal level is figuring out a better way to fund education. Just another thing about just understanding where we are in the Ithaca City School District. The state decides what school districts can afford from their taxpayers. Ithaca, the state has decided that our taxpayers can afford to pay about 70% of our budget. And the state will pay 30%. This is the reverse in most of the districts surrounding us, where their pay, their taxpayers pay 30% or even less. And the state picks up the rest of it. It's because the state says we're wealthy. So when we get even a modest cut in state aid, it impacts us. Now, the cuts in state aid that are happening this year, they're, they're affecting the districts all around us. And all these districts are talking about cutting multiple teachers from their payrolls. If and when we start to talk about that, as Eldred was talking about, our experience shows us that then the emotions start to run in another way. It's like, oh my God, you know, my, my son's favorite teacher is going to get fired. Or programs are going to be cut that are really important to my kid. And, but that, you know, is something we're talking about. We're talking about it a lot. And, you know, as been referenced, we are going to be talking about making some changes to this budget. And we are doing it with an eye to tremendous complexity about the impact of any piece of the budget and what we spend or don't spend on any piece of the budget. But we're, we are going to do the best that we think we can to come up with something that will serve the children of this district and will provide some measure of relief to taxpayers.
First, to Mr. Wright, you asked for more information pamphlet or information about why the budget is what it is. Those mailers will be going out. There will be information in school lobbies. There will be public information meetings at both GAC and the Enfield Fire Station in the next few weeks. So there is a lot of information on the way about the specifics of why certain decisions were made and how much goes into different areas. Beyond that, we will be speaking later this evening about the proposed budget as well as some alternatives to the proposed budget. And I hope people will stick around for that. Some of you, I have answered your emails personally. As many of you know, I share many of your concerns. And we'll be talking about it in great detail later tonight. So please stick around.
As, as my colleagues have said over and over again, thank you all for your comments and coming out here. I too, my family was shocked at our assessment. And we can't, and we quickly contacted Tompkins County Assessment Department. So I could only continue to appeal that everyone does that to do an appeal and grievance. After, I think the beginning of May, there's going to be a time for grievance also to continue to do that to the Tompkins County Assessment Department. And correction about the electric buses that the governor had stated the beginning of last year is that all New York State schools will change over their fleet of buses to electric buses by 2035. Not now, but in order to prepare for 2035, we started to do the work now. Last year, we had a proposition on the, at the vote for five electric buses. We do have five electric buses. We, along with other school districts, are slowly transforming our grid as well as the bus department and the transportation department and making sure that we meet that guideline of 2035. So it's not something that we can wait until 2035. We have to start doing that now. So continue to stay posted with all of the information on our website as well as attend our facilities committee. I, at a, prior than I just came from, I spoke to a community member who moved here about a year ago from Florida and was saying that she and her family have encountered all of the discussion about the budget. And she was proud to say that she's in Ithaca and able to educate her children through the school district. And there's a wait in what our final budget decision will be. But what she came from in Florida to here and what she's seen of some neighboring districts, the education that we're providing is not the same. So we welcome you to continually come out to all of these meetings and thank you for voicing your opinion. And, and the website, if there are any, there was some a comment about challenges, trying to search for things on the website. We have a communication team we're trying to work on, making sure everything is accessible to the community. And, but just continue to search. Let us know on Let's Talk and just continue the communication. Thank you.
Well, I would just echo what my colleague said. Thank you for coming out. And I want to assure everyone who's here that we read all the emails. We read all the Let's Talk commentary. A couple of points. One is just, this is a, well, seemingly a small issue, but not. My colleague Eldred mentioned the clocks, and I just want to point out they are, it's a security system. One of the clocks is on the hall right outside this room. And the safety of the children in this district is our paramount responsibility. And in the event of an emergency, one of the most important functions that we need as a district is the ability to have duplex communication to and from every classroom in this district to an off-site first responder or police presence. And those devices allow that. And therefore the safety of our children. They also tell time. So it's, it's a security system, not clocks. I just want to make that point because that, that's the number one cited example of wasteful spending. And I make no apology, apology for protecting the safety of our students. With respect to the, the budget, I'm speaking without notes, and so the numbers I'm going to cite are approximate, not exact. But typical single-family home in Tompkins County saw an increase in assessment of about 25%. Some were 20, some were 30, some were more. Some were less, yeah. My own home, full disclosure, was 25. So I, you know, I feel it too. The overall increase in assessed property in the county is about 12%, which is why if we keep the tax rate constant at 16.22 per thousand, our tax levy will increase 12%. Okay, so if a lot of homes are going up 25%, but the overall value of taxable property in the county is going up 12, simple math tells you that there's another side of the inventory. That for every, you know, winner in terms of increase in property value, there's another property that, that saw a little or no increase, right? That's how you get to an average of 12. The cause of this is a shift in the tax burden. Basically, the tax burden has shifted disproportionately from commercial properties to single-family homeowners. It's just a reality. Now, a lot of people come tonight and they say, well, my assessment went up 25%, but my ability to pay did not go up 25%. Yeah, and you're right. You're absolutely right. And this is where I go back to my colleague Morris' comment is unfortunately, in New York State, the public education revenue model is not based on ability to pay. I mean, I want to turn this into a public finance class, but we could fund public schools through income tax, for example. And income is loosely tied to ability to pay. But, you know, all but he has chosen not to do that. We raise revenue. In the case of this district, 75% of our revenue by taxing the fair market value of real estate assets. And those assets unfortunately have been subject to a lot of volatility, which, you know, agents in the room can tell you about is, is real. So I often say, I'll say it again, better than a good policy or a bad policy is a predictable policy. And your tax is going up 25% in one year as mine will go up under the 16.22 rate is not predictable. That exposes you as taxpayers to unacceptable volatility. But unfortunately, what we can do as a district is collect a rate per thousand dollars on the Assessment Office's determination of the fair market value of real estate assets. That's, that's where we are. Okay. What do we do? We are looking closely at the budget. We are trying to find savings. I, I don't want to prejudge how that outcome will come, but I, I do anticipate, at least my personal desire is to see the budget trimmed. But let me just say this. If you're a single-family homeowner, because of the shift of burden, we cannot, I'll use the expression leave you harmless. And let me tell you the math on that. So let's say you owned a house that was valued at 300,000 last year, and you're subject to a 25% increase in assessment. So you go to 375. Okay. Let's say that we wanted to keep your tax bill the same. I think it's about 4,600. Again, I'm speaking without notes, but if we wanted to just have the same tax bill to you this year as last year, and then we backed out the rate from that. Again, I think it comes out to a high 12s. If I apply the high 12 per thousand, that's $12 per thousand dollars of taxable income. If I apply a high 12, think, think about 12.9. If I apply the 12.9 number to the value of real estate in the district, we would have to reduce the budget that Dr. Brown has proposed by 20%. So at the last finance committee meeting, I asked our CFO to outline to me what a 20% cut in our budget would look like. And she did. And everyone in the room said it was unacceptable. So we are not going to arrive at a budget that is going to have your tax bill this year be the same as your tax bill last year if you lived in a home that went up 25% in assessment like my house did. What we can do is sharpen our pencils, and we've started this, and go back and look at every line, every expense. Every line of the budget is on the website, every category. I know that Amanda has, has gone through every category of expenditure. And if there's an increase or a decrease of more than about 10%, something like that, she has in red bold face print right at the bottom, the reason for that increase or decrease. So please go to that, look at the expenditures. Each one of those expenditures has a four-digit code associated with it. If you go and look at those and you see a four-digit code and you see potential savings, please email me those savings. But again, we are going to go back, we're going to do the best, we're going to try to reduce the budget. We hear you. And the pain that you express as a single-family homeowner is a real pain. And unfortunately though, I just don't think we're going to be able to leave you totally harmless.
The last time I decided to run for the board, and this is my 15th consecutive year, I asked my grandchild, who is a third grader at Enfield Elementary School, should I run? And her response was yes. And I said, why? And she said, well, you're good at meetings. These are not the kinds of meetings that I look forward to. And yet I understand that it's sort of a civic duty and responsibility to try to wrestle with extremely difficult and often competing necessities. Our house assessment went up 30%. When I was having a conversation with some of our colleagues, like many people have expressed in the room, trying to think about where am I going to get a couple extra $100 per month to do anything? Forget about savings. How am I going to get gas? How am I going to do a whole host of things? So I share that to say, one, that the pain is real. People have expressed it and I understand it as well. I happen to teach education courses, and so I spend a good deal of time talking to folks about the history of education. The United States did not necessarily invent this, but the Northeast is somewhat unique in that, you know, some 400 years ago, we had this interesting idea that we would tax people in the community to educate other people's children. Some states do it differently. Some states do it by income tax. Some states do it by a sales tax. Some states do it by a statewide funding model, so it's not necessarily in local control. I don't know that one is better than the other. I know that the way in which we currently fund education is one, not sustainable. And two, we're near equitable, as been expressed. I do think we need a little bit more mobilization at the state level, without question at the federal level. But that's not going to solve the issue that we have before us here this year. I want to reiterate two points before I stop. One is my colleague Garrick's point about a safety measure that the board voted on that we constantly refer to as clocks. I see a number of folks in the room that I know exactly what I'm talking about. Those new systems require wiring. Possibility of moving walls, right? It's not just this notion, this thing that tells time. It's much more complex than that. But I get that the headline in our local newspaper was pretty grabbing. It was, it actually was very well done. I give kudos. But it doesn't tell the full story and it just further amplifies this conversation that we're having that there may be some miscommunication. And that part I appreciate as well. My colleague Karen's point about buses, the district felt like it was being, continues to feel it's being financially responsible. The minute I saw the headline about TCAT suspending its buses, I wrote to our colleagues to have a conversation. Should we talk more? Folks should know the first couple of buses, we actually got significant rebates for, even while those buses cost double the same, double the cost of a traditional diesel bus. So in trying to change over roughly 90 buses to 100 buses within less than 10 years, the district is going through doing five at a time and trying to see if we can't get there. But I also understand people's concerns about that as well. And that's another conversation for us to have. As a 30-year resident, and I've been here long enough to know that that does not make me an Ithacaan, right? That folks who grew up here say it all the time, right? That, you know, even if you're born and raised here, I need much more time than that. But I've been here 30 years. My in-laws live here. They own property. Our sister lives here. My brother lives here. My daughter lives here. This is, this is my community, whether I'm an Ithacaan or not, and I consider myself an Ithacaan as one of my primary identities. And as we try to balance this notion between providing for young people and understanding the significant concerns expressed by our community, it's not a position that I want to be in. it's not a position that I want to be in. I'll echo what my board colleague said. Trust me, we read every email. We have multiple conversations. I think I've talked to everybody for a couple of hours over the past couple of weeks, continual dialogue, trying to problem solve, trying to quote-unquote lift up the hood and see what is available, what's there, what we can do. Uh, no doubt that we know that something has to be done that we hear, that we know, right? We'll do that. It's probably not going to satisfy most folks. Uh, and at the same point in time, uh, the decisions that we face um, are fairly significant and, uh, we're sort of at a generational moment. And so we will do what we can. We will do everything we can. And I think as another one of my colleagues said, um, I greatly appreciate the engagement. Um, I don't know that I appreciate being yelled at at Wegmans, but that comes with being a voluntarily elected person. Um, and with that being said, though, it offers an opportunity for us to share ideas and share possibilities. So to the community who's here, who's online, um, again, know that you are heard, know that we understand the situation, know that many of us, if not all of us, are living that same situation, myself and my family included. And we will continue to use our collective expertise, empathy, love and wisdom to try to put forward a budget that we think our community can support. So I thank you all for showing up here tonight. Traditionally, we move to student representatives. I wonder if we just want to hold on a second and maybe take a, a two or three-minute break. I'm looking at my colleagues. So we're going to take about a three to five-minute break, folks, before we continue on with our agenda. Thank you.
That was, I know that guy. He laughed. I mean, that was really out of.
Our agenda coming back to order. Uh, thanks everyone for your patience and grace this evening. Um, it brings us to our next agenda item, which is, uh, updates from our student representatives.
Hey, uh, well, that was a long conversation. It's past my bedtime, so forgive me if I'm slipping up here, but.
Understand.
Uh, okay, so last Thursday was the start of our LACS trips days, which are these all-day, very fun events culminating in a week-long trip either away or here, depending on the trip. Uh, I was actually sick, so I missed the first day. But I heard that things are going great with fundraising and introductions are getting started. The next one is in two days, and I personally am going to be going up to Lindsay at Cornell, the climbing wall there to do some rock climbing for most of the day. And Stella's going to share some stuff about Spanish trip.
Yeah, um, yeah, I mean, as Odin said, Thursdays are now dedicated trip days, which I always really enjoy. We combine our project times to one day where we kind of just get to have fun, which is really refreshing for a cycle. We're all burnt out, I would guess. Um, I know I am. Um, so this upcoming Thursday, Spanish trip is going to the Johnson Art Museum, um, to see some exhibits, which is really exciting. Um, last Thursday, we spent pretty much the whole time just learning some conversational Spanish, refreshing ourselves. It's been a year or two for most of us. Um, so you know, hopefully we'll be able to communicate a little bit while we're in another country. Um, and yeah, just trips days are a really great opportunity to bond as a community and with the specific trips groups um, that you have to have, you know, so much trust and communication inside of. Um, so it's a really great opportunity for everyone to be able to feel comfortable to travel across the world or travel across the school building, depending on which trip you're on.
Uh, last Monday, LCS hosted a field trip, uh, to go see the solar eclipse. And we had a total of seventy students who went and saw totality or like saw it through the clouds. It was not a good though, but the field trip still happened and it was a, it was a good success. One of, uh, the most important parts of our school's democracy is our all-school meetings. And the discussions and voting processes that we do there are not so dissimilar from that of this very board, although tonight is maybe not the best comparison to use. Um, so many important decisions that have been made recently in ASMs were a proposal for more academic assistance projects to help kids with all sorts of subjects, not just math that was already there. A set of community agreements and a push for more student voice in our classes.
As the weather gets warmer, more people are biking to school, and many bikers have noticed that the bike rack we have doesn't entirely accommodate for all of the bikes. Uh, we asked Deb about getting moving, so we are currently searching for new designs that will hopefully be implemented by next year. Secondly, students are continuing to do work on reviving our school's garden. The goal is to have the garden be a more welcoming and pleasant place to be by the end of the year. Uh, currently, a group of juniors and seniors are removing invasive plants in preparation for planting natives. And we'd just like to quickly thank, uh, Buildings and Grounds for their work on the new irrigation system. In the garden, it will definitely have a considerable positive impact on updating the garden.
Awesome. And, um, finally, just a DMD update, which I'll explain. We have way too many acronyms at our school. At LCS, another acronym.
Well played, Stella.
I hope you guys know that one, but, um, DMD stands for decision-making document, and this is a document that, um, supports translating our school philosophy into our school's practice, um, most specifically outlining the kind of checks and balances of our democracy. Um, so identifying different groups within our community, students, staff, admin, et cetera, um, as well as like outlining what decisions all these different groups have purview over. Um, we have certain decisions that are split student and staff and decisions that we make, um, as a whole in our community. Um, so that document's goal is just to outline that and have, um, some sort of outline for how we go about maintaining our democracy. Um, a team of staff and students has, have been revising this document for years at this point. Um, and we're really happy to make it to the stage where we're starting to go through the different decision-making bodies and hopefully have this document approved, um, and implemented. Students have approved this document. Um, and then staff, and we're hoping to go through the final approval process for this document and, um, have it really solidified again. So, yeah, thank you. That's it from us.
Thank you.
Wow, this is like an elevator that I normally speak. Um, hi, so today I'm just talking about the CIO by Literacy. Thirty-seven of our high school seniors, including me, have started our presentations this week. They will be going Monday through Friday. We have a total of twenty-five bilingual evaluators, um, including a lot of our teachers, which we are very grateful to have. We have forty culminating projects in ten languages. Um, and yeah, that's, that's kind of it. We have a presentation tomorrow and Thursday, so wish me luck on that. Did, did we really get three-minute time? Um, we also noticed that this particular third marking period, uh, end of the quarter date was not the most convenient for teachers. So with Mr. Trumble, we discussed that, and teachers can get extensions and kind of go in and edit the grades after the quarters ended if, um, that it does become a major issue. Like with one particular, like, summit of assessment or something like that. And if quarters were to end on Fridays, we would not have forty weeks per quarter, which would not really work for our current academic calendar. So that's why they don't all end on Friday and, you know, the teachers get a nice weekend. Uh, to great. Um, yeah, that's all I got. I'm going to go home now. Good night. Good evening.
Um, all right, we have some good news as well. So the community market at IHS provides take-home food items, uh, twice a week to IHS community members. Um, and they've shared great statistics with us. And so just in the past month of March, the program served five hundred eight children, which includes IHS students, their siblings, um, and staff members' children, um, and seven hundred eighty-four adults, um, as well as a hundred thirty-five seniors in three hundred sixty-seven households. Um, additionally, a thousand seven hundred twenty-five snacks have been distributed throughout the school community, uh, via student services, AP offices and dean offices. So the trends that we've been seeing based on the statistics for every month since last December, um, is that, um, it's increasing and the community market is being able to support more households, um, which is absolutely amazing. I talked to Ms. McDonald about what can be done to, um, keep the support available to IHS, the IHS community over the summer. Um, and so I was made aware that the funding, uh, that funding is really important and it would be required to ensure that, one, um, there'd be people available to help with distribution. And two, um, it's needed to keep the necessarily, necessary supply of food. Uh, so we thought this was very exciting and, um, pretty important news to share with the board. Um, the second thing is that next Friday, um, April twenty-fifth, the Wind Ensemble and the Chamber Orchestra, um, from our fine arts programs at the high school, uh, will be playing for over a thousand second graders, um, just for demonstration. So, um, not only in our district, but also just our surrounding, like Newfield, um, and other, um, counties were performing for all of them, just as demonstrations for, um, since they get to choose their instruments soon. Um, the arts quad has now been blocked off to build temporary classrooms for the tech department while reconstruction in E Wing is happening as part of the cap- capital project. So it is still being decided where the science classrooms in E Wing will relocate to, but we know that the tech classrooms will be in the arts quad. Um, the temporary fencing around the arts quad, um, blocks the sidewalks that connects the main building to the uh, music building. And so students have to walk around, um, the whole quad. Kaden and I said around two hundred more steps than we usually take. Um, so it is very, it's already pretty tight to go from the main building to the music building. Um, so the blockage is sometimes inconvenient, um, because classes need to be cut shorter to account for the transition time. Um, so we did talk to Mr. Trumble about this, and he said he would try to, um, um, make the sidewalk open for the students, um, so that we can create a safer and shorter route. Um, and then some updates about the bathroom, of course. So the first one is that the mirrors in multiple of the gender-neutral bathrooms are stolen. So we don't have mirrors. Somebody stole them, um, when school ended. So it was kind of, you know, we, I don't think we know who did it, but we don't have mirrors. It's a little bit of an inconvenience. We did talk to Mr. Bryman, who said that we can get those replaced right away, so hopefully soon. Um, the second is that it's impossible to find an open bathroom during the school day because multiple people are congregating in one stall for a large, uh, duration of times. And Mr. Trumble did mention that, um, they were working on trying to solve the solution, maybe an adjustment to the doors at the bottom, like a very small gap, just to see how many people are in the stalls. Um, but um, I've heard reports of like half the class being gone trying to find a bathroom. So hopefully we can get that kind of improved.
Hi, everybody. Um, okay, I've been told that my microphone skills are still made up to snuff even for like half a year of this, so you'll have to correct me if I screw this up again. Um, okay, so another thing we discussed with Mr. Trumble was how department leaders are chosen, but that was not a grievance, merely on curiosity. I always personally find it intriguing to learn more about the systems that operate within our school district and the ways in which the leaders, uh, that, you know, have a lot of say over our lives are chosen and elected. But in more high school-specific news, this year's junior will take place on Saturday, noon eighteen through seven to ten P M. If you can't tell, I'm just reading the email they sent out. Uh, at Celebrations Banquet Facility, two, three, three, one, Sladeville Road, Ithaca, New York, one, four, eight, five, oh. Uh, juniors only can buy tickets from April eighteenth to April thirtieth, after which they can buy a ticket for middle juniors. Okay, now in terms of things we're actually doing, you're trying to move the needle, exchange. Uh, I'm also in student council, and we had a meeting today. We're discussing, uh, with regard to prom, trying to make access to suits and dresses and things that maybe people from more impoverished communities might not have access to, more accessible to a wide range of, uh, people. So we're thinking of trying to partner with, uh, us reps, maybe also the head of the community closet, definitely Ms. McDonald. So hopefully there's going to be some communication going out to her. We're going to see if we can organize some kind of suit drive, some sort of dress drive to get people the materials that they need so they don't feel out of place in, you know, such a, I guess, commonly depicted high school scene as the prom. Uh, Earth Day rally, uh, that in which a number of our students are involved, uh, primarily cog and goat and just generally people who are interested in moving the needle on this issue that's incredibly important in our time and threatens to really, uh, change the world as we know it. The Earth Day Climate Rally will be happening after school, April twenty-second, I believe, on the Commons, and that's on Monday. So, yeah, that's about all I have for today, and, uh, thank you guys for listening. Yep.
Sorry, I'm just going to interject really quick. Um, and just say that prom is super exciting and great, but prom also falls a Saturday before our trips week this year. Um, which means that everyone on Spanish and, um, Katrina relief trip is not in town, which is really a bummer. Um, so yeah, just like in hopes that in future years, there can be more of a collaboration so that LCS students who are within the district get the opportunity to attend things like prom, because, you know, it's once in a lifetime. Um, senior prom falls where people are, everyone's here, which is great. Um, but for juniors, specifically like one of my closest friends who's a foreign exchange student, it's kind of her only opportunity. Um, so yeah, I just hope that we can like collaborate more on that in future years, so that's available to everyone.
Thank you, board reps, board responses. Please.
It doesn't have to be your only chance at a prom. You can, you can have your own prom at any time. I, I, I did when I was thirty in Kansas and, and it was great. It was great. We got one of those mirrored balls.
I, I love my, I love my school. I'll say dances aren't our strong suit. Um, we do try. It's the efforts there.
Stella, I think you should use your position as a board rep to make sure that Dr. Tripp shares photos from that prom.
Yes, I think for, I think for, you know, educational purposes, that's just a necessary resource, absolutely.
I'll be sure to connect with, with passing resolution. Other board responses?
Oh, I was just, I was glad to hear about the, um, the eclipse trip. That's very cool that you guys got to go. I enjoyed going myself, so I'm glad that you guys got to go. And then also, I already said this earlier today or yesterday at a curriculum committee meeting many hours ago, but, uh, High School, the Musical, the Ithaca High School production, fantastic, enjoyed it very much. Singing a lot of songs from it, as was Karen. We, we were going to do a duet maybe later. Um, but we, we really enjoyed that, so, um, that was great. Uh, so just wanted to give a shout out to that, because I enjoyed that a lot.
Any other board members?
Happy to hear about the solar eclipse field trip, especially since the decision about whether or not to hold school was up in the air, so just grateful you were, you were able to do that.
And where did you go? Us we go.
Yeah, I know.
North.
Yeah, us we go.
But did you actually see it? I. Did anyone see anything other than, okay.
Amy, did you have something to add? I didn't want to call, I thought you were about to speak. Or more.
I'm also really excited about the CIO by Literacy. Thirty-seven folks doing presentations in ten languages. That's uh, really good. Um, and Leo, what trip for you? Oh, you're out of Spanish.
I just always take the Spanish trip topics most often, but yes, me and Leo will both be across the world.
And is yours something to do with? Oh, yeah.
Uh, the wheels sound, it's just outside.
Yeah. And I just, uh, too bad Lucy is not still here. I had like. And I just, too bad Lucy is not still here. I had like a very, very strong reaction. When she said that teachers were giving some flexibility about getting grades in and they could revise them. Because I was always pulling several all nighters to get my grades in. And fourteen years after retirement, no, ten years after retirement, I still have nightmares about trying to get my grades done.
Anybody else? Fantastic. Thank you all very much. We'll keep on with our agenda, which brings us to the consent agenda and we'll entertain motions.
I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
Moved by Maura, second by Eldred. Discussion, questions, conversation. Yes, Jill, please.
I don't know what happened, but did the personnel report and the special ed student report? Come out earlier this week because I never spotted that. It was there earlier. Okay, then I'll just abstain from those.
Other questions, conversations, discussions? We'll call the question. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? You got that, Tricia? Fantastic. I believe it was eight in favor, one abstention. Fantastic. That brings us to our next agenda item, which is Dr. Brown.
Yes, and I'll be very brief. And thank you for the opportunity, Professor. Two quick things. First, thank you for your support of my recommendation. You just approved the tenure for Ms. Jen Gondak. And Jen is a fabulous educator who we were able to recruit from the T S C BOCs. Several years ago, and she's done stellar work for our school district and community, and she's a regional and state leader of the work. So thank you. We hope she'll stay with us for a while. The other item, April thirtieth, our next time together on a Tuesday evening, that's a group, will be the accommodation ceremony. So in the past, we've done that ceremony outdoors. I don't know outdoors or workforce this year, Emily, but we will be. Celebrating at this point, close to three hundred young people and adults for accommodations. And again, it's another way to show how we're supporting equity and excellence because of the folks who come up and are, and some I've seen you go all there as well too. So April thirtieth, the next meeting will be accommodations. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Brown. That takes us to our next agenda item, which is agenda item eleven point one. Which is discussion about the academic calendar for the two thousand twenty four, twenty five school year. Get some rest, good folks.
Bye, Odin. Bye Stella. Thank you. Thank you for making us laugh. Good evening, everyone. For those of you who are watching this later or are watching this at home, I'm Lily Talkit and I get to serve as the deputy superintendent of the school district. And I tend to be the shepherd of the academic calendar and I think academic calendar changes. So we've put this out, out there since. March to gather a great deal of feedback. We had another calendar shift in the meantime. Which is in part has created somewhat of a delay. In the executive folder, so it's not open to the public, right? Because there's people's names in it, et cetera. But the board members have been able to gather some feedback through our Let's Talk portal. So that we have information from our community about what they'd like to see differently in the calendar. Much of that feedback has been around spring break and aligning that with. One of the multitude of institutions that we have in our, in our community. Again, I will just reiterate the reason that we have spring break when we have spring break is because that's a regional decision. So once our Tompkins Seneca High Yoga BOCs or Board of Cooperative Educational Services, T S T BOCs. Once they set their academic calendar, it means that. All of the nine component districts, including BOCs proper, all have that like same calendar, right? So that means we share a number of students who attend BOCs and also attend Ithaca City School District. For like half day or partial day. And so not having those line up creates real challenges for young people. So that's the reason that we, we align those and those are the exact same. Similarly, we've had some feedback, please have the professional development day, the conference day on November first, the day after Halloween on El Dia de los Muertos. And I will tell you, again, that's a tricky situation for us for a multitude of reasons, including students, right? So our nine component districts all have that date on, on October twenty fifth, right? And so that means that we have kiddos who would. Not have programming on that day at BOCs, but would be expected to come to school partially or entirely, right? And so that, that shifts that, that schedule. And the other challenge that that creates is it doesn't allow us as, as staff, as educators to collaborate regionally. With the wonderful educators and learn alongside our nine component districts. So having that together allows us to leverage. You know, all P E teachers across the region together on one day to learn about the new standards, right? And implementation. And so that's the reason that we adhere to that schedule. We do have some differences, let's be honest, right? We really decided as a community that we wanted to ensure we had a more religiously and culturally inclusive calendar. So you will notice there are some, you know, in the feedback. You know, some folks are like, there's so many quote unquote random days off, though certainly are not random for our Muslim and our Jewish community members. And so, you know, ensuring that we have Yom Kippur, Rosh Hashanah and Eid of Fatiar off. Allows us to be more inclusive in general. We made that commitment several years back at the behest of young people. So I hope that's all the context. It's helpful for people.
Thank you. Two different, or three different items. One, I'm very appreciative of people's continual ask of having Ithaca City School District's spring break line up with Cornell University. And humbly and respectfully, I like to remind the community that there are other employers beyond Cornell. As an Ithaca College professor, that would not work well for me. So that's me saying that at my own time.
Wearing the I C blue.
Yeah, I, I, every day I wear my I C blue during admission season. Two questions. I had a student write to me again to ask us about Lunar New Year and for us to consider that. And that's just something for us to keep on the calendar and at least keep in conversation, discussion. I'll be meeting with that student, student soon. And then I noticed with the Let's Talk portal, there was a good deal of conversation about extending the half day. Parent teacher conferences at the secondary level to a full day. I'm certain there's been some conversation and my apologies, we didn't get a chance to discuss in advance. But can you speak to that request from our, some members of our community as well?
Always. Absolutely. Yeah. So two things. One, Lunar New Year actually was. Voted on by New York State Legislature about a year ago. And, or maybe it was in the fall. That all, all schools in New York State needed to ensure that day was off. Lunar New Year fell on a Saturday. This academic year and, and twenty twenty four, so it kind of gave folks a, a year to plan. So we do have that day off. Diwali is another holiday that some folks have requested that we ensure is off as well. And, you know, I think the board has had some conversations about that and we've had some conversation behind the scenes about that. Is required in New York City to have that day off as well. So that's really a statewide conversation and something that may shift coming up. We always make sure to include holidays of, of importance, even if we don't have off on that day. As, as many as we, as, as we do right now, we are welcome to. And welcome thoughts and suggestions to include more of those in terms of naming those. And again, big shout out to Barb Bergman, who always sends out really wonderful explanations to the Ithaca High School staff. And larger community about what each of the holidays signifies and what you might expect. To see or hear from young people and from staff and families and ways in which to be super respectful in regard to those holidays. So that's, that's a really nice practice that other folks have taken on. You're awesome. And so that's sort of like the, the best we have right now. And I know it's not perfect. The last item about having a full day caregiver conferences at Ithaca High School and at Boynton and, and DeWitt. Is really about the number of hours that the state requires that we be in session and facing young people. We, so we build in a cushion of typically about two snow days. And with the anticipation that it will snow in Ithaca, that's a silly anticipation, maybe this year, right? But in the past, you know, that's been kind of important. So we have to be thoughtful about the, sort of the gamble of those hours. Because we reduce, we actually are deducted state aid if we don't meet those thresholds. Hence the half days.
Yes, go ahead, Maura.
Two things. One is that another day that is New York State mandated day off, that may look to some people as. A random day off is Juneteenth. So that's been a few years that we've had that off. And then I have a question because in September. For September fourth, it says first day from pre K through six, ninth of New Year's, and then in red it says. Five is pre K through twelve. Oh, I see.
All students. No, it's, it's great. That's all good.
That's.
I just want to add that Juneteenth is a federal holiday.
Yes.
Yep. Did I see anybody else to stand? I thought maybe. Fantastic. If there's no other conversation, are we, are we looking just to put it to us? Are we looking for a vote this evening?
It'd be great if you could vote on it so we could get payroll calendar.
So I miscalculated without having a motion or a second before the discussion, but now we'll entertain motions if it's the will of the board.
I move to approve the two thousand twenty four, twenty twenty five academic calendar as presented.
Moved by Karen, second by Jill. Any additional discussion or conversation?
Just want to, uh. Just want to say again publicly that a lot of thanks. For us getting to this point comes from our students who presented to us years ago. And forced us to take a look at ourselves. And here we are. And many of them barely came up to this table.
Down goes.
An iPad. All right. Hearing no other discussion or conversation, we'll call the question. All in favor? I believe that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you for everyone who did the work in the collaboration. Appreciate it. That will bring us to our next agenda item, which is eleven point two, a budget discussion. We can begin in any number of ways. We can begin with an open conversation. We can begin with putting something up on the screen of a, some additional changes that we've asked. Or that I've in particular and others have asked Dr. Brown to consider along with Amanda Verba. And I want to begin by saying that I understand the process and I understand. The emotion which we saw earlier, rightfully so. And the original budget that was proposed was what the board had asked Dr. Brown to. Include with all community input, with teacher input, with various stakeholders. It was a year long process. And that was the budget that was there. As we said, and many of my board colleagues have said, not all, but many. That we understand that that budget may need to be changed and altered. And this is our time to engage in that conversation. So if it's the will of the board for us to present something, you can feel free to let us know if we want to just have an open conversation. We can begin there. I'm sure there's plenty to be said and or to be moved. So it is on as a discussion item for a reason. And next would be a voting item if we so choose at this point in time.
I have a question that might be able to start us off.
Please.
As we consider adjustments to the initially proposed budget. One of the levers that we can move is the usage of our fund balance. It was originally proposed at just over, excuse me, let me get this just correct. Just over five million in the original twenty twenty four, twenty five proposed budget. But if we look at maybe some scenarios that we may or may not be putting up. Can you speak to the ramifications of an increase in the usage of the fund balance?
Absolutely. Thank you, everyone. For those of you that don't know, my name's Amanda Verba. I'm the chief operations officer for the district. Fund balance and reserves, if you recall from finance committee. Is a really interesting opportunity that school districts sometimes use out of necessity and sometimes use because they have. You know, an opportunity to sort of bridge some thinking. Sometimes they use it to. Create opportunities to put savings away for particular purposes, right? So there are fund balances that are used for very particular purposes called the reserves. That's Katie, to your point, right? We're not talking about the reserves right now. The reserves are sort of set and we sort of pay the bills out of those for very specific purposes. So you'll see three reserves and I think all of this, all of the times that we've been discussing the budget, those have been locked in. So we're going to pay our E R S, our employee, employee retirement bill. And we're going to pay about a million of that from, from a reserve account. And then we usually try to refund that at the end of the year. We have an employee benefit reserve, which is, for example, if you get a benefit upon retirement and you get a payout, right? Of your vacation day or sick day, we pay out of that and then we hopefully refund that as well. And then finally, health insurance reserve as we, you know, pay our claims because we are self insured. That gives us a little bit of a cushion there if there are larger claims that maybe don't get covered initially. Or we have to carry those over. We have that reserve at hand. What we are talking about is the designated or allocated or assigned fund balance. Depending on where you look in the materials from state education department, all of those terms are essentially used interchangeably. What that means is, is that you take a savings account that does not have a particular purpose. And you build that into your revenue. And then you also build that into your expenditures, right? So essentially what you do is you design a budget that has almost the same amount of cushion in it that you would, that you allocate in revenue. And then that is there for purposes when needed. Mainly, those cushions will show up in special education services and facilities. And you can imagine why. We cannot predict all of the needs that our students have and our families have if they move into our district. And also our facilities, although we have a long range plan, there are things that. Decide to reach their end of useful life faster than we thought. And that happens, right? Or there are things that we have to address. So those are just two examples of where you would build fund balances in. We have been really good stewards of that fund balance, right? We build them in and we actually a lot of times haven't spent them down. So when you end the year and your expenditures actually end up less than your revenue, right? Whatever that amount is, that is fund balance that you can then reappropriate to the following year. And so that's what we're talking about, right? Did we do an analysis of our fund balance to see at the end of the year, where are we going to land, right? Is our revenue coming in and our expenditures going out? And will we actually be able to recoup that and then reallocate that to the next year? And build a budget with that kind of cushion in it, right? And it doesn't have to be dollar for dollar, but it just gives you a sense. We do anticipate that we might tap into that fund balance just a bit, right? In terms of our operations, you don't want to do that year after year. But we also have capped in another savings account that's not allocated, the unassigned or the unallocated fund balance. And that's in our auto report. You can see that. That's about six million dollars. And that cannot exceed four percent of your total budget. So if we were to end the year and we needed to go into that savings account and allocate some of it, we can do that as well. So, so Katie, we, we feel that between that pot of money that is not allocated currently. If we needed to draw from that to ensure that we had the same amount of fund balance moving forward, we could do that for this year if that's something that the board wanted to do.
Thank you. And I know some board members have expressed discomfort in using too much. And maybe this is like an opportunity to kind of talk about why.
Well, I'd be happy to. Maybe I shouldn't. I jumped a little too quick. No, no, I, I, I mean, it's the way in which I think about it. I mean, I think it's, we don't think about it this way and I understand that. But in some regards, we can think about. But in some regards, we can think about a school district budget as being personal finance. You keep pulling from your savings. At some point in time, you have no more savings. A roof goes, what do we do, right? A, a car runs into a school. What do we do? Um, and so it's not that, for me, it's not a discomfort in using the fund balance without question. There are particular times, we're hearing some of that this evening, that I think we have a necessity to pull from some of that fund balance. But I'd be hesitant to empty the fund balance for a variety of reasons because we cannot predict what happens next and we would be in a very precarious financial position if we were to empty the savings account. And I would presume that many of us here would not feel comfortable emptying our own personal savings accounts. Even while we understand we may find times where we have to pull from that to pay for particular necessities, emergencies, projects, et cetera. For me, that's sort of the simplest way in which I think about it and I may be way off, but that's how I think about our fund balance is that it's a savings account for a rainy day. Yes, it may be raining, but it wouldn't be wise to empty it.
So last year for 2024, we used, um, seven million.
We allocated, yes, we allocated.
Okay.
And that's this current year, Jill? Uh, 2324 is the year that we're in right now. Um, and so we allocated or designated, right, seven million. And so we, so our budget, again, based on the operations and how we end the year, if we recoup that at the end of the year, that could then carry forward.
And then for the proposed budget, there's a roughly a $5 million.
Right. So initially, when we, when we were, uh, developing the budget over the course of finance committee meetings and board meetings, I think there was a desire to try, um, knowing that even when you look at our audit reports, um, in the past couple of years, we were kind of inching closer and closer to our operations, sort of over overcoming our revenue. And so I think there was a desire initially to try to look at that fund balance and say, could we try to, you know, wean ourselves off, not have that much cushion and try to really actually bring in the revenue to match the expenditure. Um, and, and that is okay if we change our minds about that, right? Like it's okay. That's why fund balance is there. You hope that, um, it will bridge the opportunity for us to make some decisions about our operations and trim those costs so that then you can recoup the fund balance after. We don't, we don't have a lot. If you look at some of this, the state lists, I know, um, there's a lot of media about how much, um, school districts are putting into reserves and fund balances. We are, we're very, very good stewards of that. Um, some may say that we're, you know, at the bottom of the list. I think we're actually at the top of the list because we don't have a large percentage as a, as a budget total in a savings account. We do use that.
How much of the, of the allocated money for the 2324 year are we going to use or have we used?
So it's, it's still a little bit soon to tell, Adam, just because there's, um, there's a lot of payroll items that come in toward the end of the year, right? So people, people kind of, there's a, you know, Catherine will tell you, they kind of like hold on to time sheets and they submit everything at the end of the year. But we do a pretty good prediction of it. You're working on, they're doing amazing and that is not a critique. I would probably do the same, trust me. Um, but I, so I, the way that we're doing it right now, we just did a couple of fund balance projections. I think it would be in a range of anywhere from probably like dipping into fund balance, maybe anywhere from 500,000 to maybe 1.5 million. You have to remember for a hundred and fifty million dollar budget, right, that's, that's actually, you know, um, not, not unheard of. And so again, we have that other amount that is not allocated that we can make that seven million hole from if we'd like to.
Thanks.
I mean, the, what we didn't talk about during the public discussion that perhaps we should have is when we're talking about sharpening the pencil. Sounds innocuous, but, uh, you know, as Dr. Brown mentioned in our meeting last week, we're looking at, 20% for our teachers over three years, right? Is it, I, I don't want to misquote anything. We need to look to what we need to give our teachers. We're talking about people hurting and we know that our educators are in negotiations. We know that they're dealing with inflation and tax rates as well. So when we're sharpening our pencils, like, where does that fall? Like, how many, how many cuts are we looking at? And how will that impact these people that, you know, are looking at us to sustain their lives as well? Uh, this is the, to me, this is the hardest part.
Yeah, uh-huh. Well, one, we haven't proposed any cuts yet, um, based on where the board lands. The proposal, again, that we, uh, put in front of the, the board to consider uh, would be assuming that we would be able to go into negotiation and offer significant pay increases. Um, I got to remind folks, going back, uh, we've been here before. We went over the tax cap years ago when we went into a six-year agreement to offer four and a half, 5% increases year to year. And during that time, we saw our overall budget increase around for 4%, 4 and a half percent each year. Yes, we are looking to do more. We've heard from our community. We've heard from educators. We've, we've heard at this table that we need to do more than just the 4% in future years and an increase of a budget of 7% for next year would allow for us to plan for that. Period. Now, if not moving forward with the proposed budget, it does impact our compensation strategy. It's just simple math. And if we take additional monies out of fund balance and we take additional monies out of our current year operation, so a proposal we thought about, well, what would it look like to dip more into fund balance and at the same time, reduce our expenditures? Reduce our expenditures significantly to shift that tax rate, that anticipated tax rate. We're looking at around one or two million dollars, one or two million dollars. And then I'll say this again. I hope people hear me. Yes, we will start with cutting administration, all right? If people want to hear that, how loud can I be? Because when I've cut in multiple communities and multiple school districts before, when you start cutting, and that's a key word I'm using now, cutting or reallocating resources, yes, we start with administrators. But the kind of dollars we're talking about will impact student-facing, I've heard that term too, educators in classrooms too. So the kind of numbers we're talking about at the one and two million dollars, yes, it would include mostly administrators initially, but going past the one and a half, two million dollar into the two million dollars, we're talking about classroom teachers. And some of the, going to the tax cap, we're looking at six million dollars. No, I'm sorry, it's more than six. It's about nine million dollars. So for the folks who are advocating for us to go to the tax cap, we can do that. That will look like about a nine million dollar reduction in expenditure for our school district next year. That is way more than the number of the 53 administrators that are in our school district, folks. And we're required to have building principals. And yes, people can say what they want about my salary, but you're required to have a superintendent too. And if I'm not here, you would have to pay superintendent a similar salary if you want to look at comps and competition and all that too. So we can talk about this. We can throw accusations out there, but they're facts. So we're talking about real bodies. And at that six, nine million dollar number, we're talking dozens. And I don't want to put something out there that can be quoted like the Horsets or some other local school districts that are talking about potential cuts because you can put a number to that if you do the math. Teachers, we're talking about 55,000 conservatively per FTE. Administrators, we're talking about conservatively, a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So you can do the math when we're talking about that kind of money. It's a lot, Erin. And we can do the math to figure out exactly how many we're talking about based on the number y'all come to me with, but I didn't put in the word cut on the table because anything beyond the proposal we've shared would be some kind of resource reallocation or a cut.
Please.
I'll, I'll give a little bit of a story here on one of the options that we've been looking at. And that is that Adam and Katie and I sat down on Sunday morning with some scones that Adam gracefully made and brought to us.
He was his daughter, Anna, mostly.
Well, it was mostly Anna and I. But, um, and we looked through line by line, the budget and said, what are the district's priorities? What are our priorities? Where do we think we could possibly make some cuts without making a huge impact on classrooms, specifically teachers and aides in classrooms? Um, and what we came up with was the email that I believe all of you have seen and it said that we wanted to prioritize cuts in administration, cuts in out of district speakers. And we wanted to look at, um, using more of the fund balance, specifically said, let's look at using 10 million of the fund balance. So that would meet the tax cap. That however, would cause a lot of pain as well. And that's what we need to look at is how much pain we want to cause to get how much savings. And that's essentially what we're looking at tonight. We have another option here that would be roughly half of that. It would use, let's see, what would it take us down to? We would be looking at $2 million dollars in cuts rather than about $6 million in cuts. And, you know, we could talk all night about where those cuts from, come from. Obviously, there would be fewer for six million than for two million. I personally did not find, although I found the thought of cuts unpleasant, I did not find the $6 million cut undoable. Uh, that is at least partly because many of the positions that have been added, added over the last year or two made up those cuts. In other words, if we cut a couple of teachers here, a couple of teachers there, they were teachers who had been added or support staff that had been added in the last couple of years. So they, it was above and beyond what we had in this district in the past and what we had even two years ago. In addition, we have some teacher positions that are unfilled and some support staff positions that are unfilled. So there are arguments that could be made for cutting personnel. I know that many people on the board find that, um, an unappetizing prospect and I understand that. But those, I believe, for those who are interested in cutting the budget, that, that's the range we're looking at tonight is a $2 million cut and a $6 million cut. If that's, is that inaccurate?
I would say it slightly differently. The proposal that I put forward was a $2 million reduction in the proposed budget, all to be removed from the tax levy and an additional spending of reserve funds that would also be to knock down the levy. So it would be a reduction in a tax levy of $4 million. So for me, I think that part is key. That it's not, it's, it's both a reduction of funds and, uh, addition of reserves. But the idea would be to use all four million of that to reduce the tax levy to therefore continually to lower the tax rate. That was the idea that I was proposing as, as well. There are other avenues, other options. Um, I understand the idea of cuts. Uh, what I can say, just, this is a, a personal experience. Having experienced significant staff cuts at Ithaca College over the past four years, it was one of the more demoralizing things that I could have imagined. Watching long-term colleagues who've been there 10, 15 years. I understand that the institution had the right size, so this is not a critique, it's just a reality. And so we're having a similar conversation. Um, I want folks to be clear, if we're talking about six million or nine million, um, I think Dr. Brown, at this point in time, is trying to be kind and conservative by saying we're talking about a dozen folks. But I think throughout the entire organization, it'd be closer to, I don't want to give a number. It'd be, it'd be many more than that is what I'll say. And so I just want to make sure we put both of those up in a sort of a, an equal notion. I don't know that one is better than the other. I just know that that's, I've been down one path. And it's taken us, uh, this long to, just to begin to recover from a morale perspective.
I guess because this word cuts has come up and pain, I think I agree with that. As we consider a cut to the budget of one degree or a further degree, I, I'm wondering, can we get more clarity on what that means? Does it mean, are we just being hopeful and thinking we'll have attrition, that we'll have retirements? That this won't mean making cuts to real people's jobs? I guess I don't know how much.
At what level, Katie? My apologies for, at what level are we talking?
We're talking about if we make the $2 million budget cut and $2 million increase to the fund balance, what are the, can we get any kind of more concreteness than just, it will have ramifications to student-facing roles, to teachers versus if we do a larger cut that's looking more at, it's in the realm of eight million dollars. Sorry, I want to get, so it's an eight million dollar cut to the budget, but with an increased use of fund balance. So both of them bring the tax rate down. Both of them bring the levy down. But to parse between two options that have been put forward that both address community concerns, I think as a board, how concrete can we get about what that means for next year, for the experience of our students, for the, the livelihoods of our teachers?
Yeah, I've been, um, I haven't shared much concrete here because we haven't done that work to give you a concrete answer. And me giving you a concrete answer would be one naive. I'm having done this now for as many years as I've done it and inappropriate and identifiable. And all the reasons why I would not want to give you a concrete answer, but I can share with you some general, generalizations that can give you a sense of how much it would hurt. Um, the, and again, just to clarify, the $6 million cut would not get us to the tax cap.
It would not, that's correct.
It would be probably closer to nine to get to the cap. Now, at that dollar amount, every aspect of the organization would be significantly impacted. We are talking about increasing class sizes significantly. Um, right now, at the elementary level, we enjoy an average class size of 17 or so. Um, we have, we have some class, some schools and classrooms in schools that have, uh, students, you know, class numbers around 14 or 15. That number would go up significantly. We would have some shared classrooms at the teacher, at the classroom level. We would, uh, let's start with administration because I, I'm going to leave with administration. I've received requests each day over the last couple of weeks for the addition of assistant and associate principals in our buildings, particularly at the elementary level. Folks wish for associate principals. I've been asked that since I've been here. Not only will we not be able to fulfill that request, which we've done much of as we put this together, but we probably would have to shift away from that model in the near future. Associate principals. We're mandated to have principals in our schools and a superintendent. With the kind of, uh, nine, $10 million reduction, you're talking about, that's it. To get to the kind of reductions we're talking about and to prioritize administrators. Now, let, we, yes, we have, we had a presentation earlier where we have 67% of our young people at the elementary level picking up an instrument. That comes because we significantly added teacher FTE to allow for a dedicated art and music teacher in every building and to offer that kind of support, to offer that kind of programming. Those are things, and I'm talking, not to send anyone into shockwaves here, or when you're listening to this tomorrow, think I'm targeting these areas. But I'm just talking to you, things that we've added over the last four years to enhance our offering. So I would say that would be on the table to think about if those are the first things to shift away from for the folks who are listening. So I'm not saying these would be the things we're cutting to not be concrete, but we would look at that. We will look at our, Samantha Little came here and they talked about 1,800 young people in our school district participating in athletics. That's because we've offered a significant number of modified sports and we've increased the coaching. And we enhanced her department to do all the scheduling. That's an area we would have to look at. We talked about a new reading program earlier today. That is a quarter million dollar implementation next year. Now, we know it's important. It's a simple right to have all young people reading and we have some areas that we know have been impacted because of the pandemic. So after years of work, we had our teacher union president come down and say, the process is great. Thank you, Catherine. Every time you say something like that about us, I'm gonna say, thank you. No, it took us years to get to a place where we could have a common literacy approach to instruction. That's going to require instructional coaching, TOSSA, for teachers on special assignment. That will require professional development and will require the funding to purchase the materials. We're talking a half million dollars or more. We have heard from our community as we've been in the midst of a pandemic the last four years to add social worker and counseling supports because of the, as someone mentioned today, the crisis our young people and adults are navigating. Yes, we've increased our special education services, teachers by 12 and our social worker positions and psychologists by four, if I'm not mistaken. That's something we would have to look at. Now, I can go on. I, I, again, this is not to alarm folks, but I need to, as the instructional leader who's gone through this in multiple states and multiple school districts, it gets real, real fast. And it becomes about real people and I would want to engage, I've gone through this where it became the superintendent making the decisions late at night or in isolation. And that does not work. I would want to implement, to start a process. We're talking, the same process we use over the last year to put this proposal in front of you. I would want to truncate it some to talk about how we would shift away from it. I'm just asking for that grace. But if you're asking me to give you specifics right now, it's just going to be Louisville talking and trust me, I know the haters are out there about me already. I don't need more. Because I'm making decisions out of. Because I'm making decisions out in isolation around people's livelihoods and the impact on young people's lives. I want to talk to people. So I'm asking for some grace.
I appreciate even as much concreteness as we can get to tonight. But I recognize that it's a process that you would want input from all the stakeholders and as we look at where to trim we have to.
Um, all right, so. Again, going back to the beginning of this process. Those of you sat there at this table, we explored. Every way this district tries to prioritize. Being frugal and accountable with the budget we have. Including using money from different pockets under the sofa to pay for other things, so we would not have to tap into reserves. We are now at a point, given the community's concerns about. How this community's assessment process continues to squeeze. Single-family homeowners, where we're looking at making some different decisions. Uh, there was a meeting on February twenty seventh where Amanda did a fantastic job putting a pie chart together. That discussed, hold on, let me actually, I think I. Save this for this conversation, yes. It was a preliminary expenditure. Um. Pie chart. And she gave us numbers for our large categories. Hundred and twenty roughly salary and benefits. Bo C's twenty-two. Other contractual things we're obligated to do, eighteen. Debt service, eleven point five. I bought the total expenditures up to one hundred and seventy. So just doing some logical math. Where are we going to get these kind of savings for six million dollars? Can't come from contracts. Can't come from debt service, those are obligations. It could come from supplies. But CPI inflation is four percent, people talking about the tax rate sticking to that two percent. I'm sorry. That math don't fly. We got the same increases in milk and gas and cheese and the cost of everything that everyone else out there has, even everyone who was sitting in front of us. If they're builders, they have construction costs. If they have unions, they have to do the same thing we have to do with negotiate. So can we just put that two percent to the side for a second and talk reality? Right? So we're already at four percent increase in a budget. That's not a single person. That's not a single recognition of what we're asking our teachers to do. Which is increasing the load, increasing the professionalism, increasing their opportunity to reach more kids. I just want to be realistic. That's all I'm asking us to do when we have these conversations. What's going to go? Administrative positions. Dr. Brown mentioned A V Ps. Instructional salary increases, staff professional development, extracurricular activities, small class sizes. I could keep going down the list of our stated priorities. So without getting into the weeds and making people. Uh, uncomfortable because we're getting too close to individual positions, right? We don't want to do that. Let's just acknowledge what we're talking about. Right? It's not, this is not technology, this is not computers, this is people. These are people critical to the mission that we've stated that we want, critical to the school board and the school district we said we want for our communities to have. The state is probably going to decrease its investment in public education over the next couple of years. We aren't even talking about that. We aren't even talking about a potential two million dollar deficit in what the state is going to contribute to our cause. I'm a little more comfortable than my colleagues in saying. Okay, in order to keep the stability of our system. We might need to increase taxes. I was a Cornell employee when we were watching the state's investment in the state-sponsored colleges and units up there from Vet School I L R. We watched it decrease. University had to make a choice. Let the program slide or increase tuition, increase fees, do other things. Was it painful? What's the option? Right? What's, what's really the option? To become a different school district? To not satisfy the increasing demands of teachers and and children with special concerns? I'm not even trying to answer the question. But damn it, we need to say it. Right? On one hand, we have retired professionals, retired teachers, retired folks who have served this community and are being overtaxed. On the other hand, we have an increasingly vulnerable market, three percent, three of our elementary schools now are at seventy percent free and done, free and reduced lunch at least. The number of I E Ps our children are carrying is thirty percent now. I'm not sure what district people think we're in. And I've used this before, and I didn't, you know, I hope it wasn't pejorative, damn, I don't want it to be pejorative now. But, you know, happy days are are done. Ozzy and Harriet is done. We have an increasing number of children coming here in different circumstances. They're not in dual. Faculty, dual marital households. They're not coming to us with all of the equipment that we would want them to have. They're not coming with the million words we expect them to have by the time they enter K through three. I'll tell you what will happen based on history. I'm no predictor of the future. But damn it, if I don't know history. We continue to let this district reduce its investment on children. We will have more kids not graduating. We will not be able to defeat the next attempt at jail expansion. We'll have more homelessness in our community, we'll have more crime, because damn it, somebody has to provide services for our kids. Now, I'll say this, and if people want to communicate with me afterwards. Oh, I'm all for it. We are the only institution of the three significant taxing entities in this community, the city, the county, and us, the school district. Who is dedicated to increasing our level of services for our constituents. Somebody go, somebody, please show me a list of how the city is increasing its service level. Please show me how the county is increasing its service level. We have a different mission. We're not making widgets, we're not fixing potholes. We're managing children.
Um, other board members to see how we can move this, if we are going to move a conversation forward.
I have two, a couple more questions, um, that I, that I need to. Kind of clarify, and I hope that I can, it's late, it's way past my bedtime. Um. Yeah, it's, it's just so interesting to me that in the fall and we were talking about teacher retention and how to, how to do that, right? And universal pre-K and all these things that are super beneficial, not just for staff, but for our whole community, right? I mean, uni- universal pre-K would save many families a lot of money. We have other programs like Project Innovation that is essentially free summer camp for a lot of kids. It's school, but also. Um. And before the assessments, it didn't feel, before these assessments came in. This didn't feel like it was a problem. And so I think part of the confusion that we're hearing, and even for me personally. Where, where was the change? Was this always happening? Were, I think the concept that we're hearing in emails is that. We're almost trying to like, we're getting a windfall of money because of the assessments. And we're not doing anything different. And, and I think we need to kind of, I, I hope that I'm making sense, but kind of calibrate that in a way that it's understood. Are these assessments really like, are we, are we really like just raking it in? Like, I think that's the thing. I think, I think that the feeling we're getting from the public is that the assessments have given us so much money, why are we not cutting back? On what we're asking? And so can we get a little clarity on that? Because it's complicated.
Please go ahead, girl.
Yeah, sure, I, um, Eric, no, go ahead, I would love.
Well, I mean, it's twelve percent.
That's the app, right, okay.
That's, well, it's not the average. I mean, if, if the, the rate stays, tell me if I'm wrong, if the rate stays at, if the rate stays at sixteen point two two, our tax levy goes up twelve percent.
That's right. And so remember, in the context of all this, when this all was occurring. We were receiving at the same time, the state aid runs, right? So the state aid runs is the term that you use when the governor releases the amount of money that is going to come from the state budget to the school districts, right? When we do our long-range plan. In perpetuity, we have been, we have been essentially budgeting a two to three percent increase in those, in that foundation aid specifically. Which is, you know, upwards of twenty-two, twenty-three million dollars. And we've, we've included that in our long-range planning tools. And because we've essentially always received that. And two percent is actually often very low. We received a decrease in that amount of money. When the governor's budget came in. Which is when, at the same time, it so happened that that was um early January. She was on time, I, oh, no, just a few days late for that one. Um, I think that came out on like the fourteenth of January. We had the county assessor here at this table on the twenty-third of January. We publicly discussed, um, our. The way that assessments work. And how just because assessed values go up across this community. It, what it does for a school district, it creates an, a community that people want to move to, and people want to live in, and people want to raise their children in. Because we have, you know, along with wonderful homes that are being improved during, due to COVID, because we didn't want to sell our houses, we want to stay there and make them better. Um, that added to the value, and Jay explained all that. But also all the new buildings, right? All the new businesses, all the new um places for people to have opportunities in different types of places to live in this community. School districts don't get anything from that increased um growth. Except for the levy. Assessments only add to the wealth value of our district, which decreases our state aid. Right? The wealthier we become, the more we become the place to be in Ithaca. Along with, you know, or the place to be in New York, along with other, there's a couple of other identified places that see this kind of to- total taxable value growth. That all that it does is decreases our aidability and decreases our state amount. And the only way that we can leverage or use that money. That is in the total taxable value is to increase the levy. That's how that works. And Jay did talk a lot about how that breakdown of that total taxable value worked. And yes, homeowners are part of that, right? So we do know that that is part of that total taxable value increase. So that's how that works, Aaron. There, the, the levy is the amount of money across all the shoulders in a community that a school district or other taxable entities, that, that, that total gets spread across, right? Um, and that's the only way that you see that benefit come in terms of um revenue to a school district. Thank you. I mean, I feel like we non-budget people, like I've heard this, I was in that meeting, and it's just hard for it to sink in. And I'm in these meetings, so I think about the people coming here. Yeah. It's very, it's just like new, and.
We got underscore two, not only we not raking in money, money's being raked away from us.
Right.
Because the federal funds and the state funds are the funds that we've had access to the last four years to do what we've been doing that are gone. And when you, if people would do the search, what was happening in other school districts across the state and the country, those monies have gone away, and they are significantly reducing staff. Our initial proposal for this community was, this is what it would look like if we. Stay in, at the same levels, which is what our community has been at, and yes, my now famous quote. Folks have only come in here and asked us to do more for young people, not to do less. So if we're at a place to do less or do some things differently, which will mean less, we will make those adjustments. But this was done strategically in what we've been, been asked to do at this point, and this was before the assessment information came. Put that on the back of homeowners was something, and that January twenty-third meeting, I'll ask folks to go back and watch it. This is new information for us, no matter what people say in local media or something. This is new. To hear it and to afford to play out and for the notices to go out, for this tax rate to be published, that wasn't our current tax rate. All that was after we had a conversation with the assessor, and we built a strategy and a budget on what we learned that day.
I, I do, I do want to add also, and I don't know if any board member addressed that, there was a lot of comments about that letter. Um, that was sent to homeowners, and so I don't know if a board member wanted to speak to that, but I'm happy to do that. That letter is, we, we don't have any input into that. We actually.
Is that letter even from life?
So that, that's, that's from the Tompkins County Department of Assessment. That is their notification. They are, they are a county department. They, they, you know, manage the assessments. School districts do not manage assessments. We have nothing to do with assessed values, except that if we offer really fantastic programs in our schools. You're probably going to see that in your home values. That's what the impact is. That's it. That is it. So that letter that came out, I want to just, I'm going to share a little, just quickly, my story. I live in a different community. My letter in that community, a different taxing entity came out about a week and a half to two weeks before the Ithaca letters came out. I happen to have a relationship with a school business official in that community, who I called and I said, is this your new tax rate? And they said, wait a minute, let me look at this letter, and they said, wait, this is, is if we left it as a contingent budget. That letter from the Department of Assessments. Essentially that little chart that you see. On the right-hand side with your new assessed value, if you received a new assessed value. The taxable numbers from the taxable entities, so the county, the city, if you lived in the city, the town, if you live in this town, right, the school. That is holding the current year's levy flat, which under our definition is a contingent budget. It doesn't even get you to the tax cap, which by law, school districts and municipalities and other taxing entities have that ability to calculate, and we submit that to the state. It was, it was millions less than that, and then millions less than what we needed to do to recoup even to the state aid and then our obligations to run the operations. So I just want to be very clear, that is not our letter. We did not, we do not input any factors into that letter. That is not the school district's letter.
I want to reiterate one point, and I'm careful that we're not pitting agencies, no, 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 I'm saying me and my comments, that we're not pitting agencies or departments against one another. Um, but the timeline, I think, would be important for folks to know and to go back and take a listen or a watch, and I know folks have said, please don't ask us to continue doing that. I understand that, and yet it does help understand how we got to where we're at. So watch that January meeting. I've been including it in any email that I've been sending to folks, just so they can get additional information about how we got to where we're at. And when I got my letter, um, I'm sure someone here can attest to this, I made a phone call in a fit of rage. To say, who verified this tax rate? Because I don't remember us having a conversation as a board about that at all, and in fact, it was still in flux about what we were talking about, and we hadn't even come to a number at that point in time. But it was beyond my belief, and I do know, I'm hoping I'm not sharing too much, one board member called to ask about that number, and they were told to go speak to your local board member. I am one, right? So it was a little bit frustrating, and I understand part of our conversations today with our community beyond the pain, which again, I'm still working out my own checkbook. I, yes, I still write checks, y'all, leave me alone. Right? I'm still working out that part. Um, and with that being said, it was, um. Uh, it was unexpected, uh, and it didn't make, it didn't make sense. And so it just adds to the further frustration, confusion, people saying that the process hasn't been, you know, a long-term, year-long process. I completely understand that. When there's competing points of information that get released, some of which we had no control, nor did we approve. And so I think that's important for our community to know as well, to know the timeline, and to know that we had nothing to do with those letters in that regard, nor the assessments, but in particular, the tax rate that I saw there. Uh, would be um, even significantly much, it just, I didn't understand where that tax rate came from. That's all I'll say.
So, so, Aaron, let me try, let me try, let me try and address your. Really important question and perspective from where I sit. Again, I, I already mentioned earlier that in the document the county assessor sent out, the example they used for house was one fifty, ten years ago, now it's assessed at three hundred thousand. That's a one hundred percent increase. What we have done here over that same period is go from roughly. What we have done here over that same period is go from roughly a hundred and eighteen to a hundred and sixty, a little bit more than a hundred and sixty. If we had doubled that, we'd be talking about, what, three hundred and twenty million? So that's the distinction that I come into this with. We have been working diligently on our numbers to present to the public for a year. We had no conversations with the county assessment office until relatively recently, and then they dropped this on all of us. How patently unfair is that? Folks vote on our budget. These folks here were not able to go to the county assessor and peek into their green man behind the curtain, right? In June, July, and August, and October. Some of the people who were here said it. You would have thought that we were the county assessor and they were yelling at us, right? Had nothing to do with us. To make it even more simple, the budget our leaders have proposed is roughly eight percent. Four percent of that, again, CPI inflation. Hopefully that's a basic number people understand. Take that off the table. Unless you want us to begin to lose money just because we have to pay more for cheese. Right? The additional three point seven percent roughly is for all of the things that we've talked about here tonight. Three point seven, you know, it's not a small chunk of change for a budget of our size. But allows us to do the things over and above. No, let me say that differently. It's not over and above anything. It allows our leadership to provide a level of service which we have requested over the years. It's us who have told them that. If that's time to change, you all will let us know when we vote. We said small class sizes. We said a more diverse curriculum that represents the kinds of kids that we're seeing in front of us now. We've said we want professionals to be able to be compensated in a way that makes them feel fair. Right? Much less extravagant, just fair. It allows them to potentially live in this community, right? These are things we've said. I could get this budget to a hundred thou- a hundred million dollars if you ask me. Right? But that's not what we've said to our leadership.
I'm aware that it's ten fifteen. Uh, at least that's at my clock. We don't have an updated communication safety system here. Uh, but my cell phone tells me it's ten thirteen. Um, I want to make sure that we're respecting everyone's time and making sound decisions as our meeting has gone on. And want to take the thoughts and wants and wishes of the board. Is it the want to continue dialogue and conversation? Is it the want to put up a couple of scenarios so we can see budgets in real, some budget numbers in real time? Um, uh, just to put some dates out there, Amanda, I'm going to put you on the spot, my apologies. The last date by which the board could adopt a budget would be, I think it's next Monday.
Right? So, so it, it, it is actually, um, Friday the twenty, or the twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth, right? Because, um, we must submit what is called the real property tax report card. And that must have the total budget amount that the board adopts. Um, and that has to be submitted to the state. And that's the deadline, um, that, that we are up against. And so I have to submit that on Monday, the twenty-ninth, which means that you cannot go past the twenty-sixth, that Friday, the twenty-sixth.
And that's even if the state's budget is not finalized.
The, the New York's, as of right now, I was just up there, um, I checked right before I came down. It is still not finalized. The budget was due to us on April first, which is why a lot of things that I'm producing for you, I'm either using italics or shading the state aid numbers, because we do not have those. And of course, if we were to receive more state aid, that would alleviate, right? The levy, we could absolutely use that to alleviate-
We don't have that number, we still have to meet the deadline that you just submitted, that, that you just alerted us.
Correct. Right. There, there's, there's no, um, there's no penalties at the state level for being late to us. There's only penalties the other way around.
Though it is important to say that the- No, that is a perfect comment. It is important to say that, uh, the news stories out there are saying that the governor is holding still to their budget and that that should not be moving. At least that's what I keep reading. Folks may be reading other things, right? But that we don't anticipate a change in our initial run at this point in time.
We're not hopeful people as business officials, so that is-
I understand that. So colleagues, I'm, I'm looking, yes, Dr. Tripp.
For moving forward, it, it seems to me that there's two, two choices.
Hmm.
The, the one choice is that we say, let's put the hundred and seventy million that has been proposed out there for a vote.
Hmm.
Let the voters decide, see what happens. That, that is one certainly valid choice. The other choice is to say, let's ask Dr. Brown and his team to come back to us with a however much lower, um, budget
Hmm.
that we will adopt. Um, and I think unless we make, unless as a group, we make a decision as to which direction we're going, we're, we're not really headed anywhere. So, you know, I have no idea. I, I suspect there are at least two, perhaps more people on the board who aren't interested in any cuts at this point.
Hmm.
Um, but if I'm wrong and there's seven people on the board who aren't interested in any cuts, then I think we could go ahead and vote tonight.
Vote tonight to ask them to come back with
No.
a lower number? Oh, I see what you're saying. And if-
Oh, we could, we could start with that.
We could start with what?
We could, we could start with making a decision about if we want to accept the proposed budget. We could vote on that. And then if we don't, then that will set the direction. That's, I'm just saying that, I think that's what Jill was saying.
Set the direction.
Like, yeah, a yes or no for the proposals. If it's a no, then we're doing something else. And if it was a yes, obviously then.
And just-
I mean, it's just one path.
And just based on what Jill said, it struck me that we're, we're looking at a couple possible lower numbers. But these proposals came from board members that may not sit as close to that hundred-page document
Hmm.
that lays out what we're actually spending. We came up with approximate percentage cuts or round number cuts that we thought might feel more palatable. But if we send it back to the district and say, we as a board hope to have a lower budget, can you please weigh in on what would be possible? Here are goals, but what would be possible?
I, 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 sorry, go ahead.
I, I, I would disagree with that approach that even if I'm, I'm, might be looking to lower it somewhat, but I don't want us to get involved because it's not our responsibility as board to get involved in the minutia of going line by line by line.
Well, that's what I'm saying, because that's not our responsibility. Yeah.
The superintendent reports to the board and our only employee for him and his staff to get involved in that. So if we're going to reduce and say, okay, let's reduce it by two million, we then push it back to them and it's their responsibility to see, well, what do they need to assess and, and lower it by?
I'm, I'm, I think we're, I think we're mostly in agreement. I think I might even be going further to say, do we even want to impose the number upon them that they have to then be responsive to? Or can we say, we are looking for cuts? We are looking to alleviate the tax burden in general. Because you are closer and we pay you to be closer to those budget numbers and you do have the expertise, can you come back to us with what you see as possible, rather than us not totally arbitrarily putting these round numbers to them? But it's just allowing them, I think we're in agreement, allowing them because-
Yeah, but I want to be more specific with the options that were presented to us. So narrowing down the options that were presented, uh, presented to us to say specifically, let's reduce it by two million, whatever it is. If we go with that option, we remain it as one seventy or reduce it by two million for us to-
Ah, okay. I see. Thank you.
Here you go.
Well, the thing is, we have a deadline that we just talked about. So, um, we need to be more specific about a number. Uh, and we need to do it before, uh, you know, a, a week from this Friday. Correct?
Yes.
So.
So I'd also like to add one quick thing. I, I'd like to reverse the way in which we may be thinking about this. I wouldn't ask our team to go back and look at this hundred-page document and come back to with a list of cuts and a number. I prefer to say to us as a board, we are not abdicating our responsibility for the creation of a budget or a budget number. Say as a board, here's what we are comfortable with for our entire community. It is now your job between now and the start of next school year to find a way to make this happen. So much happens between the summer, the conversations, the collaborations between our unions. I would feel much more comfortable if you were able to negotiate within those realms to make things happen as opposed to us saying, hey, how about you bring us three million dollars in cuts? I prefer to say to you, your budget is a hundred and sixty-eight million dollars. We're taking this out of fund reserve. I'm making, I'm not saying that we're agreeing with that number, right? But your number's a hundred and sixty-eight million dollars. We're adding two more from, from fund balance. You find a way to make this happen over the next school year. We will be a part of those conversations. We'll be in collaboration with our various bargaining units. We'll be in collaboration with the community. We don't know what grants may be coming in. Maybe there's some sort of magic wand, as someone referred to later on, but I, in other words, Katie, that's what I'd be saying. I'd be saying, here's your number. You make it happen. And we, as the board, accept our responsibility for setting that number, not putting it onto the, the team at this point in time.
I, I agree with that. I agree with that wholeheartedly, except I would add an intermediary, Sean. And that is, again, if we give our leaders a number in the range that we're comfortable with, as I said earlier, then I also want us as a board to also tell them whether or not our priorities have shifted. Or whether or not we still expect them to meet all of our priorities based on this new number. And the priorities are, in the order I listed them before, keeping this, maintaining the sanctity of classrooms, increasing compensation for our professional, making sure there are the professional development opportunities for our staff that allow them to do what we've said we want them to do, and maintaining the extracurricular opportunities that this district offers. Right? If those have shifted, we need to be adults and maintain our response fiduciary responsibility and say that as well. Not just say, here's a number, go make it work.
I think those are priorities. The only thing I would add, Mr. Harris, is that, uh, I would add that we are also responsive to community needs. And we heard quite clearly that the commu- that various members of the community, we were, we didn't hear from everybody, understand that. But we have heard that this right now is going to be hurtful, no matter which direction we go. And if we can find a balance to minimize the hurt both as an organization, as well as to lessen the tax burden on real folks and real families and real money, I would prefer to go that route. I have put my cards on the table with all board members. I believe in a one sixty-eight and I believe a four million dollar reduction of the levy. That's what I believe in. It'd be great for us to have that conversation as a board and see where we vote at. If it seems like we have another week, maybe the idea is that this is the vote we have for a special meeting between next Tuesday committee meetings. What I will say to you is no matter what we do, we're going to have a continual, like, we're going to keep having the same conversations. But if at, you know, again, at ten thirty at night, if folks need more time, I understand that. If folks want to have a different conversation, I don't need more time tonight. My apologies, Jill.
Coming back to, so maybe we should say, all right, who wants to change the hundred and seventy million? You know, let's vote on it. Let's vote on the, and then if we don't have to keep talking about it, if there's a significant one.
Or, I mean, Sean has said that he supports this one hundred and sixty-eight, nine, three, five, three, seven, one.
That's the beauty of being one out of nine members.
What's your favorite way to do this? Just, you know, not-
We're, we're- Right now, right now, we're in discussion. If we want to change the next agenda item and someone wants to make a motion and it gets seconded, I, I just made that word up. Um, then we can go down that process. That's, that would be following Robert's rules. If we want to table the conversation, we can table the conversation. We can do, there are a number of procedural things that we can do.
Can we, can we make the motion and insert the number?
That's-
Or do we have to amend the motion because as it's currently up?
I would make a motion with a number in that one.
Okay.
Hmm.
Okay. Uh, I move to approve the tiny budget for the Ithaca City School District for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five in the amount of one hundred sixty-eight, nine hundred and thirty-five, three hundred and seventy-one million.
Well, one hundred and sixty-eight million, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, three-
One hundred and sixty million, nine hundred and thirty-five, three seventy-one. All right.
As long as we write it in the line, correct?
Right.
That's all it matters.
And we have it on. And I would second that motion.
Debate and discussion moved by Moira, seconded by Karen.
Well, I would just, I guess, just say that this, that this would result in four million dollars coming off of the, uh, of taxpayers' wallets, basically. So, so it's a, it's a, of the levy. So it's a, it's a relief of four million dollars. When we say the number, it sounds very similar to the first number and it doesn't necessarily sound like all that is baked into the cake, but, um, but it's actually bringing down the levy by about four million, ten, seven thousand dollars. Just, I just wanted to state that.
Additional debate, discussion, conversation.
Um, I, 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 I really don't want to carry this meeting on any longer, but it's not okay to not ask this question. Reducing the budget, what repercussions would it have the following year, right? Because the budgets just run into each other and each other, each other. Like what, what, what could this dominant, what could the domino effect be?
Amanda, help me out here. Um, because as I'm thinking about, I led with our budget presentation around, uh, uh, compensation strategy. And roughly, uh, a one percent increase to our compensation strategy for our payroll is around eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, to get to five percent increase, we're talking about, man, you, I'm looking for you some math, about four million dollars. So four million dollars less on our tax levy eats up about five percent of what we could be putting towards compensation increases. How to make that up would require a significant amount of additional and new revenue that our state has proven won't come to the table. There will not be federal funds coming to the table. So to get to the kind of let, compensation strategy that would include a five percent or more would require us figuring out how to get four million dollars in additional new revenue. Now, with four million dollars less as a starting point for the tax levy base, because next year we could go out for a tax levy increase to the cap, for example, at around two percent. I just hope people are understanding the math here. Um, we would have to figure out how to come up with new revenue in a way to give compensation increases to the levels that we have been talking about generally. That's the place I would start. I would also say that, uh, four million dollars less on the levy will push, and I, I appreciate the direction. I would prefer you ask us to do the work over the next month, couple of months in the summer. I appreciate the trust, but knowing that, that puts a superintendent and a team in a tough spot because we're making decisions um, about staffing, that people are going to come back to the superintendent and his team. And I've been reared for that heat. Uh, when I say, you, the compensation strategy would be impacted, but also staffing as well. So we will be looking at hiring chills and freezes, which is, as I went through our right sizing of an organization not long ago, so we had to slow down hiring, we scrutinize all positions and some positions we just did not fill. That would probably start immediately. And we will be looking at some staffing shifts over the coming months and years to accommodate that four million dollar difference. I just got to be absolutely clear with folks. Four million dollars is real money for our taxpayers to put back into their pockets and four million dollars that the school district will not have access to, that we had planned to use with some of these needs and wishes from our same community.
I am, I apologize. I am uneasy with this process, um, to, with a vote now where there may be folks who may support it, but may not support it tonight. Or folks who may support it tonight, but may want to do something different. And I'm very much aware of what does it mean for a board to build as much consensus as possible as a path forward. It is not my desire to keep this meeting going on. It's not my desire to keep the conversation for multi- It is not my desire to keep this meeting going on. It's not my desire to keep the conversation for multiple weeks. But I know that, I, I don't, I don't know. The voting on that number right now seems that we haven't, I don't know how to say it. I don't know how to say it.
We need to let it saturate?
No, I mean, I almost, I apologize to my colleague Moira, you know, we didn't have the conversation. I almost wish that we would have went with Jill's original proposal of, let's put up the original proposal, see what happens, and then that gives us some direction, because it's an idea of what's taking place, rather than starting someplace in the middle, which doesn't give us an understanding of where we find ourselves. Procedurally, there is a way around that, which would be to retract the motion, right? That part I get, but I think for the community's benefit, for our benefit, in terms of being of clearer thought and mind at this late in the evening, to jump to that number may not build the same amount of consensus as it would if we had a different process. And I apologize that I did not lead that part of the meeting well, but I'm, well, I know it's my, I get it's my number, but I also know that maybe not everyone's comfortable with it. And a five, four vote, or a six, three vote, or whatever it may be, may not be in the best interest of our community either. Granted, we may never have a nine-zero vote, I get that, but I'm, I'm just putting out my, my own personal discomfort.
What are you proposing, Sean?
I'm proposing I go home and go to bed. My, if I, if I had my magic wand, I would retract the initial motion, not mine to do, I cannot do that.
It would be Moira to do it?
Right, and I, and I can already see there's a difficulty, right? I understand.
I feel like, and maybe not everybody has, has portage taken, so I hear what you're saying.
But I feel like we have talked about these numbers. I've been thinking nonstop about these numbers. And so that's why I made the motion, but I understand what you're saying. I will withdraw the motion.
I thought you were going the other way.
I'm so tired. I'm really not thinking straight to tell you the.
You could make a motion.
I, all right, so I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna repeat this, and hopefully it doesn't just sound ridiculous and redundant. Before I vote on a number or resolve myself to a number, I'm still gonna ask you the same thing. I need to understand how any number is gonna affect these four things.
We're not gonna decide that tonight.
Then we shouldn't vote. How do we protect the sanctity of classrooms? What does that mean regarding?
Within ten days.
And Dr. Brown has asked for.
That's all right. Then, then, then let me tell you, let me tell you what I want, Dr. Brown, give us in ten days. I want, I want pretty specific information to the extent we can on how whatever number that he's proposes, or they have proposed, protects the following, the sanctity of classrooms, which means.
Come on.
Then why give a number?
Because we need the number in ten days. And now, we need the number of nine issues.
I, I, I say a hundred and twenty. I give you a number.
Hundred and twenty?
Okay, I'll interject at this point. We, we all had a timeline. I, I'm not in favor of you withdrawing the motion, because I second, and I second with a purpose. We had a timeline, and we've been working with the timeline. And we, quite honestly, as I said to Amanda and Dr. Brown last week, you have on the timeline started January, but we really started in twenty twenty-three. This is a year-round process now, and we've heard from different people and at finance committee and all. So we've had several considerations, and we've heard from community, which we definitely appreciate. Although there were some skewed comments, too. And it's unfortunate that our periodicals out there had misinformation. Yes, I said that. But we, we have some options here, so I'd like us to proceed to just, we had a vote on the, on the table or whatever, but if, if we're not taking back the motion, how will that vote proceed? Can we do that? I would, I don't want us to take back a motion. I'd like us to go forth with this and to just see the outcome of it.
I know, and I'm really, like, just not thinking entirely clearly. I say something like Karen said, I do not withdraw.
My, my sincere apologies. Can I, can I put forward just one process? Best case scenario, and my, I'm hearing what Karen's saying, and I apologize to all my colleagues. Best case scenario, if we were to withdraw that motion, could we make a motion starting with the original proposal and then work our way to that motion? That would make me feel much better about where we are. I am one board member, so it, it's everyone else's decision and choice. But that's.
Start with the original number, vote on that, and then make a motion?
Then make a follow-up motion after.
So we, we received clarity on the board's wishes visa be the budget that has been being developed over the last twelve months.
Right, so I, I would agree with that process.
I'm comfortable with that process.
I'm comfortable with that process, except for it's gonna take longer, but I will withdraw my motion.
And are you willing to make a new motion?
I'll motion the new motion.
Is there a motion on the ocean? I move to approve the, oh my gosh, sorry. Move to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five ICSD budget as proposed, one hundred and seventy million, nine hundred and thirty-five, three hundred and seventy-one thousand.
I second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Eldred. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor. All opposed. Any abstentions? Now we have direction. Moira, could I please, thank you, you've been so patient with me, can I ask?
Feel like I've been patient.
I think, I think your board, I, I think your board colleagues think that you have been patient.
But my refrain is, um.
Great.
Okay, I move to approve the final budget for the Ithaca City School District for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four in the amount of one hundred and sixty-eight million, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-one.
I second.
Discussion.
I hope nobody's going to yell at us for smiling.
Oh, yes.
Hearing no discussion, all in favor. All opposed. Did you catch that, Tricia? The motion passes. That, thank you all for that. That leads us to the next part, if we're ready for that, which is, we have those numbers as well for the tax report card.
I, I want to say yes, and thank you to the business office staff, Emily Shipe and Sidney Wade, who supported the development of a number of options, and tried to give the board an opportunity to see what those would look like in the required documentation. So we do have both a property tax report card and a budget notice. I do, Sean, if, if I may, and I know it is late, I just, what we did, and I'm going to own this process, what we did was to develop the documents for you. You know that it is based on that three-part budget, right? The administrative budget, the program budget, and the capital budget. To be able to get you something to be able to vote on in time, we utilized the percentages of the current, the, the original budget, right? So if twelve percent made up administration and seventy-four percent made up a program, and the remaining was in capital, we just applied the reductions of the different scenarios you gave us in that manner, right? So we kept those percentages of whatever budget amount it was at the same. We do know that that may be different from where we land after the work is done, but I feel confident when I submit these to the state, what you say is, at that moment in time, this is what we believe to be true, and I just wanted to make sure that the board had, since this is a transparency report, both of them, that I also, as your business official, am fully transparent in the way that we got to those numbers, okay? So that's around the contingency budget work. It doesn't impact anything that has to do with our fund balances or reserves. That numbers, none of those numbers change. It changes the levy amount, and it changes the contingency budget. So I just wanted everybody to know that.
We will entertain motions for the property tax report card if it's the want of the board. And it includes the new number that we just approved.
Did the document get updated?
Yes, Amanda and her team did an amazing job in updating that document and having it ready.
So I need to click refresh? Is that what you're telling me? I know. So I can move to adopt the property tax report card to accompany the annual school district budget for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year.
Second.
Moved by Katie, seconded by Adam. Discussion. All in favor. That motion passes unanimously. We have a couple. Thank you all very much for that process. We know that it's not the end of the process. There'll be more conversations to be had. It will move us on to the next agenda item, which is the resolution to appoint election officers, eleven point five.
I move to approve the appointment of the election officers for the May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four budget vote and election.
Second.
Moved by Aaron. I heard Adam's voice first. Seconded by Adam. Discussion. All in favor. That also passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Agenda item eleven point six. A resolution regarding the election of members to the Board of Tompkins Taoga Board Cooperative Education Services. These are board positions where the component school districts give us their representative, and we still vote on them as our board, as a member of the TST Bozies.
I move to cast ICSD BOE votes for the indicated candidates, including, in the following resolution, and that the district clerk shall complete the ballot by placing an X next to the name of each candidate for whom a vote has been cast and shall complete a certificate, certification of this resolution.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jill. Discussion. All in favor. It passes unanimously. And then lastly, is agenda item eleven point seven, a resolution regarding the tentative administrative budget of TST Bozies.
I move to approve the tentative administration, administrative budget of the Tompkins Seneca Taoga Board of Cooperative Educational Services.
Moved by Adam, seconded by Jill. Discussion. All in favor. That also passes unanimously. I want to thank my board colleagues for your patience through this process. We know, again, there's still work to be done. We will adjourn our meeting for this evening. Thank you all very.